Good evening. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Pledge your allegiance by me. Please stand and place your hands over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justicethall.
Thank you. Clerk, real call please.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Close session report. Our city attorney will now give the close session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. One item was discussed in closed session by the council as listed on the agenda, no reportable actions were taken.
Thank you. We will now have some announcement from our city chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive city council agendas, please sign up on the city's website.
Approve of agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? I hear no, so the agenda order is approved. So, next item, please.
Presentations. For the full text of the proclamation, please visit the city's website. LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Mayor Wu will make the presentation. We now invite Douglas Chadwick, President and Executive Director of Kiwanis Literacy Club Foundation and Kiwanis LGBTQ+ Charter Member to come to the podium to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. So let me read the present proclamation. Whereas, city council and staff have committed to make San Gabriel an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQ+ community. And whereas, all members of San Gabriel community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, and sexual, have the right to feel safe, not to not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment. And whereas, the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. Now therefore, I, John Wu, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of San Gabriel, and invite everyone to join in this special offerings. Thank you. So, can I invite, yes. I think you can speak now.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, esteemed councilmembers and mayor. I'm honored to accept this proclamation for LGBTQ+ Pride Month on behalf of the Kiwanis Division 10 in the San Gabriel Club. I serve as Division 10 Lieutenant Governor for Kiwanis California, Nevada, and Hawaii District. In that role, I oversee the clubs in our division, including the dedicated Kiwanis Club of San Gabriel. I facilitate the flow of information from the district to the club level, ensuring that we all work towards our common goals. I commend San Gabriel Kiwanis Club for their unwavering commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Their dedication is evident in the makeup of their board and their club. They have a profound impact on San Gabriel in their 97-year history here in San Gabriel. Through service projects, community events, and more, they have helped San Gabriel thrive. With continued community support, we can all benefit from them for the next century of service. In 1987, Kiwanis allowed women to be part of their club. That was 72 years after they were formed. In 2018, now Kiwanis had the first ever Kiwanis LGBTQ+ club in the world. We took another groundbreaking step in helping create and sponsor a club like this. Today, many of our clubs focus on supporting the youth of LGBTQ+ community, addressing their unique needs. We found that the LGBTQ+ youth face higher rates of suicide than any other group. According to the Trevor Project, 12% of LGBTQ+ youth have attempted suicide, and 42% have seriously considered it. I'm proud to be among those who have helped sponsor Kiwanis' first LGBTQ+ club in the nearby division. We recognize the urgent need to support the children in that community who often feel marginalized and disconnected. At our educational conferences, Kiwanis clubs prioritize increasing awareness and understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We understand that each city is unique with their demographics and needs. Therefore, as crucial as Kiwanians, we are deeply rooted in the communities we serve to address their specific needs. This is why we establish local clubs and actively recruit members who can authentically represent and support our communities. Here's the sales pitch. If you would like more information about our Kiwanis in your neighborhood, or interested in joining, please reach out to the Kiwanis San Gabriel Club. Together, we can help the children in our community reach their full potential with the support and involvement of your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. So that's our councilmember, let's take a photo and present the proclamation. Thank you. Do I cover? Okay.
San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Presentation. District Director of Communications, Anais Medina Diaz, will make the presentation.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city councilmembers, members of the public here and at home. My name is Anais Medina Diaz, Director of Communications for the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. Thank you for having me this evening. I will be quickly right here reviewing what our services, what our agency does for those folks who are not aware of what we do. We are a special district that monitors and controls mosquito-borne diseases in our community in the San Gabriel Valley. We serve as the majority of the San Gabriel Valley, for the exception of one city. Within that jurisdiction, we have 1.5 million residents, 37 full-time employees, and each parcel in our jurisdiction pays $16.90 parcel per year. So all of our services, that's how we are funded. If you ever have any resources that you need or additional assistance, please let us know. It is at no additional cost. So just how do we find mosquitoes? How do we dedicate our resources? Well, it's really based on surveillance data. So what we do, mosquito trapping, really informs where there is mosquito abundance and mosquito disease activity. I'll go into it a little bit later, what disease we actually focus on. We also provide dead bird collection, insect divindication, and mosquito testing. And so we partner with other sister agencies to send our dead birds and mosquitoes to see if they have any disease activity, because that's how we can react. We also have our operations department that focuses on larva control. And why do we focus on mosquitoes when they're in the water and when they're biting you already? Well, it's a lot easier to get rid of hundreds of mosquitoes in the water where they live 75% of their life cycle, rather than when they're, you know, out and about biting a few at a time. So a lot of our efforts will go into larva control, and we really focus on community sources. We provide residential consultations, so we are aware, we hear you. Residents are getting bit up and chewed up, and we provide this consultation service at no additional charge to try and help find those sources and provide solutions for you. We also provide green swimming pool control. So if you see any green swimming pools, let us know, and we'll work with the resident to either bring it up to code or treat it while it's getting repaired. And we also control mosquitoes in underground storm drains and black fly control for our foothill communities. And of course, we have our public information and outreach. We also have an education program that has free and GSS-aligned education programs for K through 12 students. So if you have school districts here that are interested, this is again, free, and really prepares our young children to be active members in public health, and really getting rid of standing water and being reactive about mosquitoes. So here they are. We have a community science program. So now to the mosquitoes, where you're probably asking, what are we doing? So, we have two different types of mosquitoes in the San Gabriel Valley that we look at. We have culix mosquitoes that are native, they're active at dusk and dawn, and a lot of our efforts are going to focus on them. And it's because they can transmit West Nile virus, which is endemic to our area. And I'll go into West Nile virus in a second. And then 80s mosquitoes, which have really made the news rounds in the past couple of years, because they're very active, highly aggressive biters, but they don't transmit any diseases at this time. They can transmit Zika, dengue, and canine heartworm. The other thing to note here is that 80s mosquitoes can develop resistance to adult pesticides. Another reason why we are not actively spraying all the time, because if we do, then we lose that tool to curb disease transmission when we really need to. But there is a, there is a potential for outbreaks because of imported travel cases. So West Nile, again, is our primary disease of concern, and I'll go into a little bit about what West Nile virus looks like here in the city of San Gabriel. But West Nile was first detected in 2004. Most folks will be asymptomatic, but those who can develop, you know, more severe reactions are 1 in 150 people, and they're usually older adults or folks with immunocompromised systems. And so, West Nile virus is transmitted through the bite-in infected mosquito, and that mosquito gets it from a bird. So it's a bird virus, and then from there, it can affect humans and horses. There is no cure and no human vaccine, so the best method of protection is prevention. So West Nile virus, as you can see, it happens all the time, it happens every year. So again, we need to prevent it by doing tip, by tipping, tossing, and protecting. So you can have more information about West Nile virus activity in the entire San Gabriel Valley by following the QR code. As you see, in the past couple of years, we've kind of been inching up here and there, but it's really all relatively normal to the activity that we see. So in the city of San Gabriel, here are some identified locations of West Nile virus. So we've kind of been trending up shortly. This past year, we had six West Nile virus positives. In 2022, we had four. In '21, we had four, and in '20, we had three. And so, when we find a positive mosquito sample, we reach out to the city, and we do further investigation. We look at all the sources that are in your area, and we make sure they're up to date. And then, of course, as the season continues, if we continue to see disease activity, then we'll do, you know, additional measures to try and curb disease transmission to humans. But it is going to occur all the time. So again, reminder, tip, toss, and protect. Tip outstanding water from containers. And this really goes back to the 80s biting pressure. All they need is a spoonful of water to grow hundreds of more mosquitoes. Toss out any unused containers and protect yourself with insect repellent. It's unfortunately a very new, normal life thing that we have to wear insect repellent, and as long as it has one of these four active ingredients, it will be very effective at protecting you. And if you want to do a little bit more, if you're tired of these 80s mosquitoes, please join our bite-back group. And this will help provide more resources to your specific community and neighborhood with the help of you. So if you want to hand out door hangers or host a presentation to go in more detail about mosquitoes, reach out to us, or of course, submit a tip to let us know if you see any standing water or green pool, or you're getting bit up by mosquitoes. I've also brought our yellow booklet, which is full of information. It's out in the lobby, so if any residents want to take a look at it or stop by City Hall, it will be there. And again, just very quickly, you know, these are the four ingredients. Where you can locate it on the repellent bottle is towards the bottom. The higher the percentage, the less often you're going to have to apply it. And one last thing before I conclude. The past couple of weeks, you've probably heard about sterile insect mosquitoes being released in Los Angeles County. Just to let you know, there are different vector control districts that serve Los Angeles County. There is one vector control district, Greater Los Angeles County, that is releasing sterilized male mosquitoes to reduce the amount of female mosquitoes that bite. And they're doing it in a very, very small community out in Solon Tahanga. So at this time, our vector control district is not moving forward, like this year, but we are exploring the potential of using sterilized males to curb mosquito activity or disease if needed. This is a few years out, so, but we are, we are looking at either partnering with the other vector control districts that have this kind of technology already in-house, and, you know, ramping up our capacity to do so as well. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know. We'll be celebrating National Mosquito Control Awareness Week this month, so your city will definitely hear about us, so we can partner in sharing that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any question from Marcozo?
I just wanted to applaud Anais for being here. I am on the Board of Trustees for the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control, and we have a very hardworking staff and doing, you know, all the due diligence to keep us safe. I did have a resident who called you and was very pleased with the service that they got, and they identified it was a bird bath that was creating havoc in that street. So, so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
As he known, and thank you very much for the informative presentation, and thank you again, Director Diaz.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Our first comment tonight was submitted online. It comes to us from Robert Powers and reads as follows. It's June, a big month for everyone. San Gabriel loves summer, and San Gabriel residents love food. And don't we all? It's a great time to go to the farmer's market. According to the California Farmers Market Coalition, there are 3.5 times as many U.S. farmers over the age of 65 as there are under 35. Farmers markets provide one of the only low-barrier career entry points for new farmers, ranchers, and food entrepreneurs. This allows them to start small and test new products. But it's not just great for farmers and local vendors, it's great for the economy in San Gabriel. The San Gabriel Farmer's Market is fantastic from all angles. In this month of June, thank you for supporting local farmers and vendors. I am wishing everyone on the council and in the city a happy month of June. That concludes the comment. And our first speaker is Florence Simpson.
First, I'd like to thank Mayor Wu and Councilmember Tony Ding for your continued support. I'd like to offer two definitions. Gaslighting, specifically in regards to the LGBTQ+ community, often manifest through denying specific issues exist, distorting narratives, and invalidating experiences, all of which have occurred in this chamber over the past four months. Hypocrisy, the practice of professing beliefs, feelings, or virtues that one does not truly hold or possess. It involves a contradiction between one's stated principles and actions, such as passing annual pride proclamations yet terminating the here commission. The pride proclamation you presented here tonight was cut in pace from last year's proclamation, of course, with the section of the here commission removed. I offer you my own proclamation in honor of pride, which started, started as a protest, and sadly, in my own city of San Gabriel, is still a protest, not a celebration. Whereas, in a special city council meeting on January 16th, Councilmember Denise Man-... Whereas in a special city council meeting on January 16th, Councilmember Denise Manchaca remarked that there were excellent candidates for the here commission and along with the city council-appointed three commissioners. Whereas on the same evening, the city council approved the here commission's annual work plan that included continued their work plan, develop and implement all are welcome program and create pride events supported by the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center's Pride Tour. Whereas the all are welcome program was presented to the council on February 20th, and Councilmember Denise Manchaca made several incendiary comments, including, why was LGBTQ selected? It's so narrow. And I don't like the fact that it's so focused on just LGBTQ. Whereas she continued to gaslight LGBTQ plus community members by claiming the bell logo with the pride colors was not very welcoming, continued to invalidate the pride flag, and used her Catholic faith to insinuate that the church would not support LGBTQ community. Whereas Councilmember Manchaca called for the termination of the here commission on March 5th, immediately after the commission discussed her inappropriate remarks, she asserted that, quote, "There was a need before, but not anymore for the here commission." Whereas on May 21st, Councilmember Manchaca requested an agenda item to form an ad hoc committee to focus on support of the pride community, proving that the here commission work is still vital and necessary. Be it resolved that I respectfully ask the mayor, city manager, and city attorney to investigate Councilmember Denise Manchaca for code of conduct violations for her direct retaliation against here commissioners, with the intent to silence them by terminating their appointments to the dissolution of the here commission. Commissioner members do not report to individual council members, nor should council members feel they have the power or right to threaten board or commission members with removal or termination of their commissions if they disagree about an issue. The retaliatory actions taken by Councilmember Manchaca actively devise, denies community input, and diminishes our confidence in an open and fair city government, especially for LGBTQ community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. So next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull any items, however, we have received comments for item 4 F and item 4 I.
So there's a public comment. Okay, so should I ask?
I think you can have the comments.
So let's have a comment first. Thank you.
We'll begin with the comments for item 4 F. The first comes to us from Cheryl Cabot. And reads as follows. Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and council members. I am Cheryl Cabot, and I wrote the article about the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for ColoradoBoulevard.net. First, I want to commend the women, former volunteers, who stepped up to expose the mismanagement of the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. The two dogs euthanized, as mentioned in the article, just before they were to be adopted, was not a one-time incident. It was just the incident that was the tipping point for several volunteers, who after listening to the excuse Cindy Rigney, the director gave for having Bartok and Donatella put down, they walked out and quit. Rigney also gave an excuse for losing the insurance of San Gabriel Valley Humane Society by putting the blame on the insurance broker, saying he neglected to renew the policy. However, she had mentioned in an earlier meeting with volunteers that she was worried about losing their insurance. In a panic after losing the insurance, she had 60-plus pets moved to the Inland Empire Humane Society. Rigney found insurance at literally the midnight hour, but as of yet, the fate of the moved animals is not known. Several calls to the Inland Empire Humane Society went unanswered. Please remember, even though the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, noted as valley, is located in the city of San Gabriel, it is not owned or run by the city, and therefore the city has no oversight of it. And therein lies the problem. There is no transparency. The city is paying for a service, but has no idea how the money is spent. Improvement at the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society must come from the top down. Cindy Rigney needs to be replaced by someone who actually loves animals, respects the volunteers, and communicates regularly with the city, allowing transparency. If you have not yet read the exposé of the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, you will find it at ColoradoBoulevard.net. And that concludes the comment. The next comment is from Linda Perea. And reads as follows. I would like to bring to light an incident I personally encountered when I attempted to adopt a dog from the S G V H S. I was very much interested in adopting a dog named Bartok. He was a very handsome Alaskan Malamute and Husky mix. I called to secure an appointment and was given Sunday, November 19th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. My entire family was so excited to adopt from the shelter because for the past 30 years, that's where all our, our companions have come from. Since I was in the area on Saturday, November 18th, I dropped by to hopefully introduce myself to Bartok. I rang the front doorbell, and after about five minutes, I was greeted with, what do you need? I explained that I had an appointment, but based on the sign on the door, that walk-in appointments would be accommodated if space allowed. Besides my car, there were no other cars on the lot. The lady was extremely rude and hostile. I asked if I could come in and meet Bartok. She rudely replied, Bartok is not available for viewing. I shared that I was given an appointment for the following day, et cetera. She continued rudely and forcefully saying Bartok is not available for viewing. When I asked her if I should come back the following day, she leaned over the front door rail and again, in her demeaning and rude voice, repeated that he was not available for viewing. It was at that point I asked if he was put down, and she angrily replied, I told you he's not available for viewing. I returned to my car in tears, sensing that he was put down before his time. Fast forward to Sunday, November 19th, I called to cancel my appointment and the shelter had already canceled it for me. What does that say? Also, there were two dogs put down before their time. However, the shelter advertised them in the local paper as being available. Who's running the ship over there? I would also like to bring to your attention that S G V H S had a contract with Petsmart in Alhambra to house cats for adoption. According to Petsmart, Petsmart management, S G V H S did not pay the contracted amount, and Petsmart was left with paying vet bills for those that needed care. Also, there is no paper trail as to where those cats were transported to. So please, before you approve the increase of 115,000 to S G V H S, please consider replacing Ms. Rigney with an individual that has compassion for animals and is able to provide excellent customer service. She is acute, she is acutely not as aware of what is transpiring on her watch. Please require transparency of where the additional funds are going. Please require that board minutes are posted to their website as well as names of board members. What is the reason that an appointment is required when all L.A. County shelters have lifted that requirement? I urge you to take action and investigate what goes on behind those gates. I'm sure you'll be surprised. That concludes the comment. The next comment is from Mia Gutierrez. And reads as follows. I would like to bring to your attention a few items that I feel are very important and should be reviewed before a vote is taken to renew the contract with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. In good faith, I would like to have the following clause added to the request of a contract renewal. Please list all board members, meeting minutes, and email addresses of said board members. An entity such as the S G V H S should be transparent as possible for the sheer reason that donations are being solicited. As an individual that has donated monetarily in the past, I would like to know where my donation is going to. Is it going to the cost of labor? Is it going to animal food? Just exactly where and how is the donation being spent? Also, I firmly believe that the shelter should discontinue the need for an appointment for the public to visit an animal. How on earth does the animal stand a chance of finding a forever home without an interaction with a potential adopter? Please note, all L.A. County shelters have done away with the appointment request. Two months ago, when I attempted to visit a dog with the intent to adopt, I was admonished for not making an appointment, and it was stated that due to COVID, I would not be allowed to visit any animal without an appointment. I brought to their attention that the sign on the front door states that a walk-in would be accommodated if the shelter was not overly busy. It wasn't busy. The only vehicle on the lot was mine and the shelter van. Based on this interaction, the animals behind those gates have a slim chance of getting adopted. Please, before you approve the additional 115,000, require Ms. Signy Rigney to be transparent with all shelter operations. That concludes the comment. The next comment is from Robert Nichols and reads as follows. I live in a city that utilizes the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society for stray animal services, just as the city of San Gabriel does. I would like to urge the council to approve the contract and, and the additional monies over the current year for the Humane Society. But I would also like to urge the council to suggest more oversight on the management and results for the animals sheltered at the Humane Society. Why have the conditions been allowed to get so bad? Why did many of the volunteers resign? Are the policies for euthanasia being followed, or is it all up to one person? The ColoradoBoulevard.net article makes a lot of points that are of concern. It will also mean that fundraising for the shelter will be difficult. Make no mistake, the job there is heartbreaking and difficult, but policies are put in place specifically to make things easier on the staff. If they are not following them, they should be counseled and trained and allowed to adjust or suggested to find a different position. Please give them the additional funds and more oversight. Thank you. Our first in speaker person on this for item 4 F is Cynthia Talavera.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council and city officials and community. I wish to comment on 4 F. I support the proposed budget for San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, but with many reservations. As a community member and former volunteer, I was very proud of the wonderful work the volunteers and staff did with the animals. I just want the S G council, San Gabriel council, and the community to be aware that things are not right at the shelter. There is no oversight or system for accountability in place. Staff turnover is fast. There needs to be a plan in place to monitor services provided by the shelter and that all items listed in the contract are being met. In my opinion, the shelter is not adequately serving our community. I have submitted public comments already this year to report loose dogs being released to owners in less than 12 hours with no safety check, even after vicious, life-threatening attacks on other dogs. That's not protecting the communities or any of the dogs involved. I also made public comment on the horrific events of Bartok's euthanasia and the pain it caused volunteers and his prospective family that was going to adopt him, Donatella's euthanasia for a skin condition. Both dogs were advertised as adoptable and in shelter videos and named November Pet of the Month, but were euthanized even before one of the articles was released. We were devastated. I would like to ask council to request an annual audit or submission of shelter records to support the services rendered for the $525,000 budget, to include live release rates, animal control entries for pickup of stray or abandoned animals, records of safety checks of animals and community, as well as itemization of expenses and income sources. I strongly ask the city manager and city commissioner assigned to the shelter to look at the structure of shelter management and ensure that the board members are active board members, attending regular meetings that have agendas and minutes. A list of board members detailing their respective roles at the shelter, along with a copy of the bylaws, needs to be posted and available in the front office or on the website so that they can be contacted for information. We have had the same board president for seven years, and it's quite a secret as to how one can become a board member or even contact them. We need more transparency to the community. Somehow, our shelter needs to start operating as a team with open, honest communication. Our shelter needs to respect and follow recommendations made by the rescue team, implement lifesaving programs such as fostering, make more efficient use of volunteers so that the staff can do the things that only they can do. And lastly, open to the public with regular visiting hours. COVID is over, and it's time to be welcoming to the community again. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Rachel Conger.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity to address all of you. I am not opposed to the proposed budget for, for the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. However, I do believe there are many issues that need to be addressed, addressed with regards to the shelter. I am a longtime homeowner in the city of Temple City, which is actually the other city that the shelter serves. And I was also a longtime volunteer at the organization in all aspects that volunteers were able to serve in. I've never been as proud to work along with such incredibly talented group of volunteers as when I volunteered there. Let me be absolutely clear. I think the cities of San Gabriel and Temple City have an amazing gift in the shelter in their backyard with the support of so many incredible volunteers. However, the structure and transparency of the shelter need to be improved. There are many instances as I could touch on, but since my time is limited, I will go over just a few. Recently, the shelter moved over 60 animals to the Inland Valley Shelter. A post on social media mistakenly led people to believe that all the animals were removed, all the animals that were removed were being put in loving homes. This was not the case. Shortly after the removal of the animals, Inland Valley posted they were desperately in need of foster homes after helping San Gabriel Valley. As a former member of the rescue team there, I can assure you that over 60 animals could not possibly be placed, placed in homes within a couple hours' notice. No reason was given to the public other than operational issue. I believe the communities the shelter serves deserve to know what happened and that saw them close their doors one day, transport and traumatize over 60 animals for a move, and then miraculously open up the next day. When the shelter was back in business, all the animals were not returned, and also something that should have been addressed. The community needs to, is deserved to know who and what caused this operational issue. I used to be a member of the rescue team whose job was to network animals of all kinds that had been at the shelter too long, have medical or behavioral issues that made it hard to adopt them. There was one dog that was experiencing extreme kennel stress to the point of hurting himself. Therefore, we were actively seeking a rescue for this animal. One day, I inquired about him and told he was doing fine, but he was in the back, so we could not see him. We continued that day and the next morning to contact rescues via phone and email to try and get the sweet dog out, only to find out that the, the dog had been killed prior to when I inquired with him about him and told he was doing fine. You can only imagine the devastation we all felt. I've been involved with many nonprofits that always make sure officers and board members know that we need to, that are known and able to be contacted if necessary. The bylaws need to be posted. The board members need to be made public. And we need to know that the administrative structure of the shelter provides the service that the community deserves. It's not a secret how things work there, and it shouldn't be a, well, it shouldn't be a secret how things work there. Volunteers, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I, oh, never mind. Can I show you a picture? I don't know if I can show you. I just wanted to show you, this is Bartok and Donatella that were euthanized after, and this was, this was on several days, this aired, or was out several days after they were dead.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the speakers for item 4 F. I do have two speakers for item 4 I.
Sure, please continue.
Our first speaker on item 4 I is Charlie Liu.
Good evening, Mayor Wu and the city councils. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Charlie Liu. I'm the co-host of the June 22 Thanks USA event. We are reaching out to the city council to sponsor the Thanks USA Independence Day Celebration and the Care Fair event. This is a significant event that promised to greatly benefit the resident of San Gabriel. This also marks the 10th anniversary and the first time we hold the event in San Gabriel. Last year, I see most of the city councils there. The celebration is not only opportunity for the immigrant and resident to gather and celebrate the Fourth of July, but also provide roughly around 30 free health services to the local community. Additionally, this event will honor and support our fire and the police department. In recognition of our longstanding partnership, under the positive impact of the event, we kindly request the city, city to consider waiving or reduce the rental cost of $2,900 for the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse parking lot. This will greatly assist in the continuation of this valuable service and celebration to our community. We appreciate your, your consideration for our request and looking forward to the possibility of partnering with the city. of partnering with the city on enriching our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Hay.
Good evening, San Gabriel City Council. My name is Mary Hay. I'm the vice president of the San Gabriel Hope Lion Club. As a nonprofit organization, we deeply value the support from our community and San Gabriel City. I am on behalf of my group to ask the city of San Gabriel to support this great community event that would be a blessing to San Gabriel residents. This Thanks USA Independent Day event is not only an opportunity to celebrate the Fourth of July, but also is cultural awareness gathering. Based on last year's great feedbacks on the free medical checkup and consultation from our community members, this year, we invite more medical professionals to attend our event, and we will provide 30 free medical service booths to the community. In addition, we have a multicultural display that will further enhancing the cohesion of the city and reach the lives of residents. Since we have invited more medical professionals to join our event this year, the costs increase a lot, and we might not have enough funds to cover all the expenses. Today, I am on behalf of my group and the community members. We sincerely hope that you will consider our requests and look forward to being able to fulfill our wish to reduce the rental fee of the venue of this event about $2,900. Thank you for your valuable time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the comments on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you all the public comments. So now, would any council member would like to pull items for separate discussion?
It doesn't have to be separate discussion, but I did want to make some comments.
Some comments? Sure. Go ahead.
So regarding consent agenda F, which is the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, I wanted to ask Mark in particular to maybe explain the relationship we have with the Humane Society, because there has been talk about oversight. I understand that Humane Society has a separate board. I have a list of the board members here. I'm not sure if this has been made public or if it's on the website, but it's a report, registration renewal fee report that I found, and it lists Sidney Wigney as the director and president, Joni Nasser as the director and secretary, Christine Sacenté, director and treasurer, and then John Cortez as director. So can you explain the relationship we as a city have with the Humane Society?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Vice Mayor Menchaca, I'd be happy to. We have very much an arms-length relationship with the Humane Society. They are a contractor for us, no different than if we hired Athens to do our disposal services. They are required to perform a fee for us, I'm sorry, a service for us at a set fee. We do have a contract that, as I think all the council up here is aware, we beefed up a few years ago, where we have deliverables that we receive from the Humane Society. We meet with them regularly, at least once a year, to go over any issues. And then we are currently working with Ms. Wigney on her plan for the future of renovating that shelter and bringing it up to a standard that the county, I'm sorry, the council and the city and the community can be proud of. I would say, or remind the council that Cindy Wigney is in the audience, so if you'd like to ask her any specific questions about any of the comments, you are always welcome to do that. And with us, she has been very forthright in discussing some of the situations that have come up, but because we have an arms-length agreement, we have no way to really investigate any of those detailed claims any more than we do with any of our other service providers. But the responses that we've got from Ms. Wigney have all been 180 degrees opposite of some of the concerns that we hear. So I would ask if you have more concerns, that she's ready and willing to answer those.
So the community has, or we've had some comments tonight, what is the recourse? Because it's not the city. They would have to go to the board of directors. Who would they go to?
You're exactly right. The city does not oversee the Humane Society. The information, because it's a nonprofit, is available on the Attorney General's website, as with any other nonprofit that's registered in the state. Hopefully, people wouldn't have to go to that extent, that they could call the Humane Society and get that service, but worst-case scenario, that information that I believe you read from is probably taken from the Attorney General's website.
Thank you.
So now, we still have just a question, if we need to pull any items for separate discussion? Yes, please.
Yeah, it's the same item, the 4F. Yeah.
You want to pull, or you...
No, no, I just wanted some, asking a question to the Mark or city attorney. So another, is it possible our city can request like one of the board member? That's first option. Second option, if not, so can, is the city can send someone, our city staff, to attend their board meeting, something like that?
I'll jump in, and please, Martin, jump in after I get my comments. But we purposely stay away from the management side of things so that we have the liability protection in case something does come up. If we are too involved in the direction that the Humane Society takes, there's a chance that either we could become liable for them being an employer, which brings all sorts of employment issues, or if we direct it too closely, then, and there's a liability from that, we can take that on ourselves, or we can find ourselves in a liability position. We would be more than happy to work with Ms. Wigney and see if we can attend those board meetings, just to watch those, if they are open to the public. I would not suggest, though, that the council try to get somebody on the board of the facility. Ultimately, that would be a council direction and something that the Humane Society would have to agree to.
I don't have anything else to add. I think, and I would just advise, if a discussion's going to continue on this item much further, we should probably pull it. If not, we can move forward with voting on it.
Okay, now, anyone want to pull items again for separate discussion? Right here, no. Okay, so you want to move?
Okay, I'll move to approve the full consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Menchaca.
I'll second.
Second by council member Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
Public hearing, adoption of proposed operating budget, capital improvement program, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now.
So I now open the public hearing. Finance Director Kaholo Kalala will make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. It is my pleasure tonight to present the proposed operating budget, capital improvement program, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025. To begin with, here is a timeline of our extensive budget process. We kicked off the budget in January with a community budget survey. In February, the city manager provided budget instructions to departments to prepare their spending plans for the next fiscal year. Those spending plans were put together by the departments, and there were extensive meetings conducted with the city manager, the finance staff, to ultimately come up with a draft budget that was presented to the city council at a public study session on April 24, 24. The budget was presented at that public study session, and it was discussed in detail. And then in May, individual meetings were held with each council member to continue to discuss and answer questions regarding the budget. Just this Saturday on June 1, 2024, there was a community budget meeting that was held at the San Gabriel Public Library. And then tonight, we're conducting a public hearing to present the 2425 budget, the related resolutions for possible adoption and additional discussion. So some of the highlights for the fiscal year 2024-25 budget that's presented to you tonight. So our general fund budget is balanced with a slight surplus of $575,000. General fund reserves are projected to reach $17.36 million. So we will have met our contingency reserve target of 25% in reserves. Additionally, we're able to set aside $3.88 million for funding our other post-employment liability and for capital replacement items like buildings, infrastructure, and equipment. The citywide, all-funds citywide budget expenditures is $82.45 million, which includes 25 city funds, including the general fund, 21 special revenue funds, and three internal service funds. As far as our capital improvement program, we're adding an additional $3 million to the program, which is funding for nine projects. And then our five-year forecast, looking out to 2030, shows that our general fund is projected to increase its reserves based on our current operating design right now. So by 2030, reserves are projected to reach $24.7 million. And then since our public study session, there have been a couple changes to the budget that's presented to you tonight. One, we added $184,000 transferred to the Mission Playhouse from the general fund to balance the Mission Playhouse fund, to bring that fund balance to zero, and $15,000 was added to council expenses related to the increased costs in essential seminars and conferences. Next, we'll look at our budget from a citywide perspective. So the all-funds city budget is $82,446,000. Of that amount, our general fund makes up 65% of the budget, our 21 special revenue funds, 26%, and our three internal service funds, 9%. As far as expenditure type, operating expenditures for this budget year is $79,393,000, which is 96% of the budget, and our capital improvement program makes up 4% of the all-funds budget. Moving on to the city's general fund, so as the city council know, is aware that the general fund is the primary operating fund for the city. So as mentioned earlier, the general fund budget is balanced with a slight surplus of $575,000. Revenues are projected to be $54.5 million, which is an increase of $2.9 million from the prior year. Taxes and transfers in are the major drivers of the revenue increase. And proposed expenditures are $53.9 million, which is an increase of $2.9 million from the prior year adopted budget. And our personnel cost is the major driver of the increase in our expenditures for this upcoming budget year. Taking a little closer look at our general fund revenues, taxes make up the majority of our general fund revenues, compiling 67%, 66% of all general fund revenue sources. Property tax is the largest tax contributor. Transfers in is our second-largest revenue source for the general fund, which is the transfer from the retirement fund to pay the CalPERS pension costs. This year, all revenue categories are projected to be higher than the prior-year adopted budget, with taxes projecting the largest increase of $1.54 million. On the expenditure side, the general fund total expenditures is $53,937,000. By far, the largest expenditure category is our personnel category, which includes salaries, overtime, part-time costs, retirement benefits, health benefits, and other insurances. And the increase in the proposed expenditures for fiscal year 2425 of $2.9 million is primarily driven by an increase in personnel cost, as the general fund has added five funded positions, as well as our CalPERS unfunded accrued liability payment increased by $793,000 this upcoming fiscal year. Here is another perspective of our general fund expenditures. This is general fund expenditures by department, and you can see in the graph, like all cities, public safety expenditures make up the majority of general fund expenditures, followed by public works, and then community development. So next, we'll analyze our general fund. We'll do a five-year forecast, and we'll focus on what our net change in fund balance will look like, as well as our fund balance reserves. So this slide presents our net change in fund balance, as well as our ending fund balance percent of expenditures. So the blue bar is our net change in fund balance projected for the next five years. And then you can see in 2425, as mentioned earlier, we have a surplus of about $575,000. And then our net change in fund balance, which is revenues minus expenditures, is positive, so it's increasing, and you can see the amounts that it's increasing. Every other year, you see a little peak in the net change in fund balance that is due to every other year, we're able to sell our Proposition A funds for general fund dollars. And then as our net change in fund balance is increasing, our general fund percent of expenditures is also going up, reaching 38.9% as of 2930. And so the greater your reserve percentage, or your general fund percent of expenditures, the more fund balance is available to pay for expenditures. And then here is a table of the five-year forecast. So this is the information that created the graph on the previous slide. So we have revenues minus expenditures, and then you see in the blue line our net change in fund balance increasing for the projected five years. We have the beginning fund balance. We add the net change in fund balance to the beginning fund balance, we get the ending fund balance, and then we're able to do the calculation to get the ending fund balance of percent of expenditures. Next, we'll look at our five-year forecast as it relates to our fund balance reserve strategy. So in accordance with our fund balance reserve policy, our target contingency reserve is 25%, and these are for inevitable but unexpected things that may come up, like natural disasters, downturns in the economy, pandemics. And in accordance with our policy, once we reach that 25 reserve target, then we begin to set aside funds to pay our other post-employment liability or retiree healthcare liability, as well as we begin to set aside funds for capital replacement, such as buildings, equipment, and infrastructure. So as we seen on the previous slides, that our net change in fund balance is increasing, you can see, based on the table, that we're able to maintain our contingency reserve amount of 25% throughout the projected 2030, as well as continue to set aside funds for OPEV funding and capital replacement, projected to reach nearly $8.8 million by 2930. And then here is a bar chart of the data, and then the gray chart, the gray bar being our contingency, our 25% contingency reserves, and then the blue chart, the amount of funds, the amount of fund balance that we're setting aside for our liability, as well as our capital replacement. So next, we'll move on to our special revenue funds and internal service funds. So special revenue funds are funds that receive funding that are restricted for a specific purpose. for a specific purpose. So this slide presents our special revenue fund expenditures by their restricted purpose. And so you can see that the largest special revenue fund expenditures related to our retirement costs this year, followed by transportation, and then moving on down the line to having some special revenue funds for public safety. Next, we'll look at our internal service funds. So internal service funds are funds that provide services to other departments. We have three internal service funds. Our fleet services fund, used for the replacement and maintenance of city vehicles. Our risk management internal service fund is for city insurance, workers' comp, and general liability insurance. And then finally, we have our information technology fund. So overall, internal services fund costs are lower by $583,000. This is due to less vehicle purchases planned for this next fiscal year, lower insurance costs and less IT projects that are budgeted. So citywide staffing. The fiscal year 2024-25 proposed budget has a total of 204 authorized positions. This is an increase of six positions from the prior year, which were added to enhance services provided to the public as well as improve operational effectiveness. We also made some staffing changes that included reclassifications, addition of some positions, as well as one equity adjustment. And then our capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2425. So as mentioned earlier, we're adding just over $3 million to the capital improvement program. It's funding nine projects. And here is how the $3 million is being distributed based on the type of projects. And then here's just a table of the capital improvement program based on the type of project. Nine projects with the significant project of $1 million for an I-10 e-bike access project. And then moving on to the appropriations limit. So annually, cities are required to adopt an appropriations limit. Their appropriations limit is the maximum amount of tax revenue that we are able to appropriate for expenditures. This year's updated appropriations limit is recalculated based on population change and the Consumer Price Index. This year's appropriation limit is $53,286,000. Our appropriations that are subject to the limit is just under $35 million. So we are $18.8 million below the appropriations limit. A resolution is required to adopt the limit on an annual basis. So next steps is tonight, we're conducting the public hearing of the proposed operating budget capital improvement program and appropriations limit for fiscal year 2024-25. On July 1st, 2024, the new fiscal year will begin from July through December. The current year that we will be in will be under audit. And by December 2024, we'll publish audited financial statements. January 2025, those audited financial statements will be presented to the city council. And then February 2025, we'll do a mid-year budget review and pretty much start the process all over again. And throughout the year, we'll be providing quarterly budget updates to the city council on how we're progressing as the year moves along. So staff's recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2425 operating and capital improvement program budgets, the position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit. And after receiving comments and testimony, adopt the following resolutions. A resolution adopting the 2425 operating budget. A resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program. A resolution adopting the authorized position classification and salary schedule. And a resolution establishing appropriations limit for fiscal year 2425. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Will Kahawukula. It's great that we have a 25% contingency reserve goal achieved. Does any of our council members have questions to our staff?
Clarify, I'm not going to log.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Well-presented. I have two things that I just wanted to confirm. When you said that, once we exceed our reserve target, we start to allocate money towards other things. When you show that allocation, is it still shown as a reserve? Or does it actually get taken out of that pot and put into another pot? So that we're not, you know, kind of saying, oh, yeah, we're here to get our reserve, but we're earmarking that money for something else?
So it's still under fund balance. So fund balance is, you know, technically our reserves, you know, the extra we have left over. So out of that total fund balance, we're saying 25% is for contingencies. And then another portion is for the OPEB liability and capital replacement. So it stays under fund balance. We just put a little tag on it.
Got you. Got you. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. It's not taken out and moved somewhere else? And then it's still allocated inside of that percentage?
Exactly. It's still in the general fund.
Thank you. And then the second question, when we adopt our limit on the, what is it called? Appropriations limit. When we say we're 18 million below, that's what? If we maxed out every single tax, that's the maximum we could possibly collect, correct? Is that what you're saying?
That's the maximum that we could appropriate.
To the budget?
For, to the budget, yeah.
So after that, there's no way we could? Even if we taxed more money, we couldn't put it into a budget?
Once we get our appropriations limit, unless we ask the voters to increase our limit.
Got you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. Any other council member have questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. And this is excellent. And so proud that we have a good financial team and also the finance team and also a city management team. Just quick questions about the CIP. There's something that you just mentioned, 1.05 million for the e-bike access project. Is that the fund we are getting or we are going to pay for this?
I believe that's a grant fund.
It's a grant. We received.
That's a grant that we received.
So $3,530,000, that also include 1.05 million. So it's not at all, this is included.
That's correct, Mayor.
And the second question is, I know that we are closing the 2023 to 2024 budgets by the end of the year. So those reports will be released and available for our audience to read, right?
Absolutely. Yep. They'll be, once the audited financial statements are published, they'll be on our website. And we'll provide a presentation to the city council with the auditor present.
So if the budget will be approved today, tonight, then how soon that our public is able to access to this report?
I think in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to put all of the budget documents together, all of the graphs and the charts and the pictures and all that stuff, and just get the formal budget document together. I think we're in pretty good shape right now. So I think we could have it done in, probably a couple of weeks, we'll be able to get the final budget document on the website.
Awesome. So, yes. As our chief, city clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do have one comment that was submitted on the website. Comes to us from Jeffrey Santner, resident, and reads as follows. "Our elected officials pride themselves on keeping our community safe with our excellent police department, which is also the largest item on our budget. But they are missing a major danger to our community, cars. Over the last 10 years, on average, there were roughly 200 injuries per year caused by car crashes as opposed to 98 reported violent crimes. In the same period, cars killed almost six times as many people as homicide. Thus, in our city, we are far more likely to be physically harmed by a car crash than a crime. Reducing car-centric design and encouraging other transportation methods would make our city safer. Based on FBI data, an average city of our size has 48 officers, while we have 72, or 54, depending on how you count. I am not proposing that we remove any of our wonderful police officers, but as they retire and our population grows, I think we should reduce new hiring and aim for the FBI average for a city of our size, which is 1.2 officers per 1,000 people. This money should be reallocated to public works in order to address that larger threat to public safety, car crashes. Public works can improve street design to make it safer, more enjoyable, and more convenient to travel without a car, reducing vehicle miles traveled and crashes. This could fund projects such as improved lighting, protected bike lanes, paint isn't good enough, pedestrian bumpouts, raised crosswalks, tighter turning radiator, strategically removing turns on red lights, modal filters, bus rapid transit, et cetera. Our peers are making improvements in this area. Alhambra, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and Los Angeles are all beginning major improvements to pedestrian and bike safety, and I hope we can join them. On a more personal note, I want to live in a city where my kids can get to school, extracurriculars, parks, and visit friends safely and independently. I want to walk with them to the library without being on high alert due to the narrow sidewalks and frequent street crossings. And I want to be able to converse without yelling over traffic on Del Mar. I want my neighbors to have the option to travel without a car, whether it is because they cannot drive, cannot afford a car, want to reduce their carbon footprint, or just want to get some exercise. I want every day to be as lively and fun as the Mission to Mission Active Streets event." That concludes the comment.
Thank you, Chief. No more comment?
I have no speaker card.
Okay. So now I close the public hearing. So it's now time for our council member to, for discussion. Who would like to start?
If there's no discussion, I go ahead and move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion to be made by Vice Mayor Manchaga.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chen. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no continued business. Our next item is new business item A. Ordinance number 708, adding Section 150.300 to the City of San Gabriel Municipal Code, setting forth an expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations as required by Government Code Section 65850.7. Introduction and first reading. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now. Building official Chris Kalbachlian and management analyst Kayla Kors will make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, esteemed council members and members of the public. My name is Kayla Kors, and I'm here today to present ordinance number 708 for your consideration. This ordinance addresses the expedited permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations in accordance with state legislation. In 2015, the state of California enacted Assembly Bill 1236 requiring local jurisdictions with populations under 200,000 to establish streamlined permitting procedures for electric vehicle charging stations. Our proposed ordinance, number 708, is a response to this mandate and intends to bring the City of San Gabriel's municipal code up to compliance. As mandated in AB 1236, the key components of the ordinance include, one, a checklist of requirements which outlines objective criteria for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, ensuring that permit applications meet all necessary standards for expedited review. Number two, administrative permit review process, which will be implemented to expedite the approval of electric vehicle charging station permits, facilitating timely service to permit applicants. Number three, electronic submittal of permit applications, which serves as an alternate option to in-person applications, improving accessibility and efficiency in the permitting process. And number four, prohibition of association approval condition. The ordinance clarifies that permit approval cannot be conditioned upon association approval aligning with Civil Code Section 4080. The adoption of ordinance number 708 is critical for promoting sustainable transportation solutions within our community while ensuring compliance with state legislation. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council introduce ordinance number 708, adding Section 150.300 to the City of San Gabriel Municipal Code, setting forth an expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations as required by Government Code Section 65850.7. By title only, waive future reading, and schedule the second reading and adoption for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you for your attention. Chris Kalbachlian and I are now available to address any questions or concerns you may have regarding this ordinance.
Thank you. Does any of our council member have questions to clarify this report?
I just had a brief one. Thank you, Mayor. Where can people go to in our website to find stations? Or is that just through the process once they own an EV, they have access to it?
So this ordinance is actually for residential and commercial. So if you're installing a residential charger, we expedite the review and for a commercial. For EV chargers, I mean, there are a lot of apps that you can download where you can, you know, actually see where there's an EV charger available.
Okay. But typically, cities don't put on their websites, just to show that we are trying to comply and trying to be part of that group who is converting to EVs.
Sure. We can definitely look into maybe having something on our website that'll show where we have electric vehicle charging stations available for the community.
That would be helpful. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other colleagues would like to ask a question? No? Okay. So I have just a quick question. It seems like this ordinance, we're supposed to, the deadline for this ordinance, deadline was on September 3rd, 2017. So that means it's all past due. So we are now just go for the first reading. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we always complied. We always did an expedited review. We just hadn't adopted an ordinance.
So the property, I know that so far we have several charging stations, including the Nine-Eyed Ranch Market. They have a lot of Tesla charger. Also, in underground, the first floor of the San Gabriel Hilton, they have plenty of the charging station as well. And to adopt this one, is that impacting any residential? Because we have residential, you know, our resident, they have probably installed their own charge station in the garage. So that means this is something they will need to follow in the future. If they purchase an EV car and they need to install EV charger, they have to follow the code to install it.
So this actually for residential as well. We expedite the review if they want to install a charger at their home. So they don't necessarily have to go to a commercial site to charge their vehicle.
So does that mean the licensed contractor that will be required for performing the installation?
Typically, they, you know, it's a licensed electrical contractor that comes and pulls the permit for residential. And we do issue the permit over the counter.
And what about if the circus of the system? For example, the sum of the property may have like for 70, 80 years. So those electrical system may not be feasible for EV charger. So for those kind of evaluation, who will perform that?
So usually, the electrical contractor, when he, you know, visits a residence, he'll look at the panel that they have to make sure it's sufficient. And the paperwork that we have that the contractor has to fill out, they actually have to provide us a load calculation to show that the EV charger that they're going to install isn't going to overload the panel. So usually, it's the electrical contractor that would have to do a load calculation. And we verify that to make sure that they're not going to overload the panel.
Does anyone need to pull the permit from the counter before they can install the charger at home?
They're supposed to pull a permit before they install the charger.
Okay. That's good. Thank you very much. Okay, so we need to, let me see. How about a public comment? Chief City Clerk, I'm sorry. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no submitted comments or speaker cards.
Okay. So it's now time for our council's discussion. Who would like to go first? Okay, so it's now time for our councils to discuss, who would like to go first? No EV car? I guess I'll start. Councilmember Chen.
I mean, this is, thank you, great job with the presentation, but, I mean, to me, this is another one of those items where there's really, I don't think there's really that much to discuss, because the dopey California state government is forcing us to do this, and so there's not really much we can do about it, so we are.
Very true.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all my comments.
So do I have a motion?
Okay, just asking, for the state legislature, is one of mandatory adopt this resolution, like Mayor Wu was asking, it's easy, will be for the, our resident or business, if they apply the EV charge station permit, it's easy to get it and is more difficult? That's my question.
Councilmember Ding, that's a great question. The whole purpose of the legislation is to make it as easy as possible for commercial and for businesses.
Okay.
So we, as-
That's my understanding, yeah.
It's designed so that there are no hurdles for somebody to come and pull a permit, that they know upfront what they're going to have to do, and that we quickly and efficiently give them a permit, so we don't get in the way of people buying electric vehicles and installing chargers.
Okay, so usually, this kind of permit, we, in our cities, how long they, we can approve their permit?
Typically, for residential, it's issued over the counter. For commercial, they do have to submit for plan check, because you have to look at accessibility and path of travel and the electrical component, where they're going to get, you know, the electrical from, whether it's from a transformer or a panel. So for residential, it's over the counter. For commercial, typically, it's submitted for plan check, and it varies, it might take up to one to three months before a commercial site can get a permit.
What about a resident?
Residents is over the counter.
Over the counter, so just same days issue it, or?
It's the same day.
Okay, all right, that's good to know, that's I want to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ding.
I'll move to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion being made by Vice Mayor Manchaca and seconded by Councilmember Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
The next item, please.
Approval of an agreement with ACE Parking Management Incorporated for Parking Enforcement Services through June 2027 not to exceed $1,249,668 for the three-year term. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now. Police Sergeant Dan Gosran and Captain Edwin Brock will make the presentation.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. Rather than do a presentation, much of the proposal was provided ahead of time, and we've had several discussions as far as the need for parking enforcement. We've had it for several years since 2012, I believe. So our parking contract with Intercon is coming on expiration as of June 30, and we went through the RFP process. We received two applications. We, wow, we went through the rigorous process of questions and ACE Parking, I'll bring Mark Raymond, who's the Director of Business Development, and Tom Pesky up, who's the Vice President of Los Angeles and Orange County for ACE Parking, as an introduction. They provided a very well-organized presentation proposal, which is the most attractive, and we, staff's research has shown that they're the ones for the job to take over and start doing the enforcement for our city. So it's nothing new, it's just a change of face, change of logo, and hopefully, some improvement with some of the efficiencies that we haven't had in the past with technological advantages such as plate reader technology and some of the operations that they have. And I'll let them, I'll let them talk about that, it's a little more technical than I-
Perfect. Thank you, Sergeant Gosran, thank you, City Council and Mayor Wu for having us tonight. Like Sergeant Gosran said, my name is Mark Raymond, I'm the Director of Business Development for ACE Parking for Los Angeles and Orange County. With me here is Tom Pace, our Regional Vice President for LAOC. Tom is actually going to oversee this contract as the contract executive on behalf of ACE, which is something he already does for the City of Santa Clarita contract, which we also do for Parking Enforcement Services. A little about ACE Parking, we are a 74-year-old family-owned and privately-held third-generation parking company based out of San Diego, so we're local. We oversee over 100 locations across Orange County and Los Angeles, including several parking enforcement contracts currently with many municipalities as a national company. And with ACE, so we like to say our little sales pitch, you get the resources of a large national parking company with the attention to client needs of a small family-owned business, and that includes us coming to city council meetings, so you'll see a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member has any question to ACE?
I do.
Jeez, Vice Mayor.
I just had one quick question. What are the language proficiencies that you have? Because our community speaks multiple languages, but in particular, Mandarin, Cantonese, Spanish, Vietnamese. Is that, do your attendants, or I'm not sure, officers, have that capacity? Can you assign them to our area?
Yeah, so right now, we're actually vetting over 100 applicants right now. Typically, our team is proficient in English and Spanish, but that's definitely a good point to consider right now with the demographic that we have here in San Gabriel, so something to consider.
Thank you.
Any council member? Okay, so I do have several questions, I have read the report, and thank you so much. The new uniform looks cool, and it was a new car, but there is something, it mentioned that ACE Parking will finance the city parking vehicles and will be responsible for the maintenance and any damage incurred to the vehicles or equipments, and also including insurance and routine maintenance will be also handled by you. Does that mean, can you clarify, what does mean by finance the city's parking vehicle? Does that mean we, we city, we own the vehicle through the ACE's parking finance service? Just like a car leasing, then we just get a car?
Yeah, so we're buying the vehicles outright to start the contract, and we're amortizing that cost over to the city over the course of the contract.
Okay, so you will handle everything? Any car, like wears and tears, the tires change, and oil change, then you will handle it? Actually, you are using the Toyota hybrid?
Yeah, the proposed vehicles are Toyota Corolla hybrids, that's what we use in the city of Santa Clarita and work very well, and we handle all the maintenance directly. We coordinate any, you know, tire replacements, oil changes, anything like that with Toyota. Typically, those charges, we're handling it, but those are direct pass-through costs that are budgeted on the contract.
So since you have insurance, I have a question for Mark. If any accidents occurs involving personnel or the vehicle from ACE Parking, would this affect our city's insurance rate, like such as those with JPIA?
Thank you, Mayor Wu. It should not. The short answer is, is that one of the reasons we have outside companies is to pass that liability on to somebody else. As you know, in your experience of being with the city, we could get sued for anything and everything, but we have minimum insurance requirements for our contractors, and they will have those minimum insurance. They include us as an additional insured, so that we can collect against their insurance for any of those issues, and then ultimately, the JPIA would insure us for anything over and above that, but it should not or will not affect our rates.
Well, thank you, Mark. And I'm very excited that your company is providing upgraded equipment for, like, licensed reader, it's called ALPR, right? So this system, you are able to monitor the parking violations by license plate. So my question is, if your company identifies some stolen cars or a wanted criminal, how long will it takes to transmit the data to our police department and have them to take action?
Yeah, so the integration with the vigilant cameras that we have proposed for this, there is a real-time communication for those hot plates, is what they call them. So if we do drive past a stolen vehicle, maybe some suspect for some terrible felony, that is communicated in the back end through the vigilant company to the law enforcement agencies. I don't have an exact timeframe, I'll confirm with vigilant, but it is pretty instantaneous that that alert goes to the law enforcement.
So for your parking staff, actually do not have the police authority? So will they wait for the police arrive, or they will just leave the scene?
Honestly, the communication wouldn't come from our staff.
Okay.
That alert comes through the backend system. In some cases, our staff wouldn't even know that maybe that's a stolen vehicle. That communication's going to go in the backend directly to the law enforcement agency.
Thank you. And I know that you are capable for adopting the parking system, such as like a passport or another parking apps program. So in the future, will ACE increase the service fee to the city if we will adopt the new parking policy or the new parking apps? That will allow people to use the app, and you scan the license plate, and you know this guy is parking here for a few hours, but he needs to just like add the funds, but he doesn't, you give him the citation. Will you increase the service fee for that, or that is more based on revenue share?
Yeah, so we wouldn't increase any of our fees for providing the enforcement services. If you do go with another third-party application, there may be different costs than what you're currently paying, but that would be determined with whatever application you're going with. But as far as our enforcement services, nothing, no matter what you use, our fees aren't going to increase for-
It will be flat.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sir, I could add to that as well. So there's kind of a three-prong effect for the parking. We have the permitting, which is for finance, for like our overnight permits and our yearly permits. There's also the processing part, which is another company we use right now called Phoenix, is what we're using, and then ACE would be the bodies on the, boots-on-the-ground enforcement part. So the Phoenix part of the processing and the fees of the online permitting and all those things, that would be a separate contract, which is expiring next year, which we'll bring, we'll do our research and do the same process with that company. So if that makes sense, all the adjudication, processing of, you know, the DMV and all those things, that's kind of on the other end of what they're doing. They're writing the tickets, someone processes it, and then it'll all communicate, hopefully, with what finance chooses to do.
Okay, that's great. So in the future, we don't need to get a sticker from the finance, as long as they pay, the license will be tells, right? When you scan it, you know this is expired, isn't it light, the parking permit is no longer good? Okay.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Okay, great. Thank you. So Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no submitted comments or speaker cards.
Awesome, okay. So it's now for councils to discuss, and do we have any, who would like to start? No?
Maybe it's the same question, it's for the, the enforce the vehicle, it's owned by your company, not a city. Is that correct by my understanding?
Yeah, so we hold the title for now, we are amortizing the cost over to you, so once that's fully financed and amortized out to the city, that in theory could become the property of the city.
So the insurance will be put on our city as additional insurer, just in case? The people sue you and then sue the city, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, I think it's more, if they're owned by them, it's more protect our city, you know? Yeah, so, and then I just maybe public also concern about like privacy, you know, because you have the license plate reader, it's how do you store the data? How, is just in case the leak in the data, or did you have any like a safety policy?
Yeah, so the vigilant company is actually storing the DMV, or not the DMV, but the license plate information, and there are different timeframes that that information can be destroyed, and it's in their cloud. And that's only tying in the plate and the GPS, that's not tying in any registered owner information or anything like that, simply that they know that a plate was scanned on a certain date and time, and then that information is destroyed over time, and those thresholds are variable as far as how long we need to store those.
If just in case to have something happen, so can notify our community too? If just in case some like hack people to hack the data, right? So we can, the city will be got a report, or our PD will be got a report ASAP, right?
If there's any data breaches?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would be informed by the LPR company, definitely. And the contract, they're holding harmless on any data breaches, us and the city.
And another question, I see most, sometimes the people, they got the parking ticket, they want to appeal, so it goes through our police department or it goes through your company?
So that would be on the processing end, I'm still, there's no change in how we're doing the adjudication yet, that would be the processing part. So all we're basically doing is ACE will be the company that writes the tickets, I'll still be the one who reviews them-
Okay.
-until we go through that process again, because that contract, like I said, is expiring next year. So once we have a new company, there may be a slightly different process, but for the most part, it'll be the same, it'll be online or in person or on paper. So that's, but that's the process side, they're more on the enforcement.
So still, people, if they want to appeal, they still have a chance, just right now, still go to our police department?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So any other colleagues would like to discuss?
I'll just move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion being made by Vice Mayor Manchaca and seconded by Councilmember Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
So before we move to the next item, let's have a short break, 10 minutes.
Health break.
Health break, yeah, so we will come back on at 8:16 PM. So we will come back on at eight 16 PM.
I live in Temple City and do not want this to pass to affect my environment. End comment. The next is from Maria Jupp, resident. I do not support transgender transformation on children. If a child under the age of eighteen says he comes from a family of alcoholics and wants to drink and buy alcohol, are we going to change the drinking and by age to accommodate? What if a child under the age of eighteen wants to drive a car? Will we change the driving age to accommodate? Now, what if the child wants to drink and drive? Then what? Half the time, kids under eighteen don't even know what they want for breakfast, lunch, or dinner. Leave the kids alone, please. That's the end of the comment. The next is from Tony Wang and says, oppose this. The next is from Yi Wang. The comment reads, I strongly oppose this. The next is from Carlos Quintanilla, resident, and reads, I oppose this due to our family conservative values and beliefs. The next is from S. Washington and reads as follows. Honorable San Gabriel City Council members, if this proposed committee is based on people's sexual preferences, I oppose it. Last year, the Dodgers honored Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence that dress as nuns and perform explicit acts that mock the Catholic faith, Jesus, and nuns. This group was also honored in Sacramento by Democrat legislators, too. You may not be aware of the work nuns do and have done. Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas recently shared in a post about the courage of his nuns that came from Ireland, went to the segregated South in Georgia to teach poor black children, and for this were subjected to vitriol. Yet dispute the opposition, they stepped into a class of forty black, poor black children to get them to learn and believe that they could learn and that there was a reason to do so. When you consider that one of the members was taken into custody a couple months later for indecent act in public, and another member from another group in Michigan was arrested for the possession of child porn, my opposition is not out of hate or a phobia. Since all of you are the gatekeepers of your city, you are responsible for the safety of the citizens and their values. Thank you for your time and consideration. That's the end of the comment. The next is from Tiffany Salerno and reads as follows. You need God's blessing on your city. Why turn your back on family values and foundational values in order to exalt pride and perversion? Don't bow to the LGBT agenda. Choose righteousness, and you will be covered, protected, and rewarded. End of the comment. The next is from Suzie Gunn and reads, I kindly ask that you oppose this item. The next is from Alan K. Chan and reads as follows. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the city council on supporting the LGBTQ+ community in the city of San Gabriel. I have bad news and good news. Kai-Fu Lee, an AI expert that has worked for Google, Microsoft, and Apple, still believes in his prediction from 2017 that fifty percent of jobs will be displaced by AI in the next three years. As bearish as that is, America will change drastically, preparing our cities, government, and future children for that important is important to me. His good news is that even though white collar and more slowly blue collar jobs will be displaced, human beings can still do things that computers can't do, like love, have a soul, be passionate, and building trust with others. Being able to work in teams, cooperate with a diversity of people, and having the emotional intelligence skills to navigate the future will be key for our children and for society. LGBTQ+ are part of the infinite diversity and infinite combinations of people, and I hope you will join other cities by not only building a subcommittee, but also encourage restoring a commission to reach out and coordinating with local LGBTQ+ representative organizations in the San Gabriel Valley area, like the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center, PFLAG San Gabriel Valley API Chapter, The Wall, Lost Memories, and the LA LGBTQ Center, since none of the city council belongs to that LGBTQ+ community. That's the end of the comment. The next is from Tony, a resident, and reads as follows. Something can't be both wet and dry at the same time. You can't celebrate pride and Christianity at the same time. Scripture says that God resists the proud. Satan was literally cast out of heaven for pride. If you want to be inclusive by promoting sexual behavior, where do Christians fit in with this? As a city that was founded by Father Juan Eperoserra with a historical mission, a beautiful church, are you willing to offend and exclude most Christians for the sake of promoting sex preferences? The Bible is clear that sex before marriage is sin. I don't care if it's between boy, girl, or LGBT, et cetera, anyone who creates a whole identity regarding sex is obviously having sex before marriage and by biblical standards operating in sin. Now, I'm not here saying, oh, you're bad because you sin. We all sin. The major difference is I didn't demand that people affirm my behavior. I knew my choices and consequences and walked in it privately. So, please don't expect us as a city to accept someone's private sexual behavior and celebrate it while parading it around in our city. Sex is not like race. It is not, it is not something you're born with. It's a choice, and it can change over time. I chose to sin in my past, and these people are choosing their sin. That is their free will, their choice. I still love them. The point is, we should keep our sins and private lives to just that, private. San Gabriel as a city should not be promoting anything along those lines. Therefore, I reject item 7C on today's agenda, and any council member that votes in favor will no longer have my vote in the future. Thank you. The next comment comes to us from Christian Port of the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center and reads as follows. To the members of the San Gabriel City Council, I write on behalf of the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center concerning item 7C, the formation of a two-person council ad hoc committee to address LGBTQ+ issues. While the intent behind this initiative might be to support the LGBTQ+ community, the lack of direct representation from within our community raises significant concerns about its potential efficacy and alignment with our needs. Before we can offer our support for this subcommittee, we need clear answers to the following critical questions. One, how will the council ensure that LGBTQ+ individuals are not just considered, but are actively involved in the subcommittee's leadership and decision-making processes as none of you represent our community? Two, what specific outcomes does the council aim to achieve through this subcommittee, and how will these initiatives be measured and assessed for their impact on the LGBTQ+ community? Furthermore, how will our feedback be centered in this assessment? Three, how will the council implement an intentional structured approach to engaging with LGBTQ+ organizations and stakeholders to ensure the subcommittee's recommendations are comprehensive and reflective of our community's diverse voices? Four, how will the council guarantee transparency in the subcommittee's operations and maintain accountability to the LGBTQ+ residents of San Gabriel? Five, why is the subcommittee slated to end on December 31, 2024? We need assurance that the needs and rights of the LGBTQ+ community will be considered year-round, not just during Pride Month or when it is temporarily convenient. The effectiveness of and intentionality behind these efforts must be considered, particularly in a time when the rights and dignities of LGBTQ+ individuals are increasingly challenged. A subcommittee that operates without genuine representation and clear objectives will fail to serve those it is intended to help. It is imperative that these efforts not only start with a strong foundation of representation and clear objectives, but also that the council commits to ongoing engagement beyond a set termination date. We urge the city council to address these questions thoughtfully and thoroughly before proceeding. Our community deserves a proactive and genuinely representative body of decision-makers that can make a real difference in their lives. Respectfully, Christian Port, Vice President, SGV LGBTQ Center. That concludes the comment. The next is from Andre and reads as follows. I oppose Agenda Item 7C. If you want to be, if you want to truly be inclusive, focus on real events that everyone loves, like the farmer's market. We all got to eat, and we value fresh local groceries, and I see so many wonderful vendors from all ethnicities and genders who I get to greet and learn more about every week. That fosters love and inclusion, not creating some separate agenda that by nature will divide the community, will make some families feel uncomfortable, and based on the track record of other cities, it will cause more arguing and disturbances than anything else. I encourage you to research what happened to the Dodgers' Pride Night last year and in the Burbank and Glendale school districts. Please don't open the door to this chaos for the sake of protecting, for the sake of promoting someone's private sexual preferences. Let's stick with wholesome community values, building ideas like the all-inclusive farmer's market. Fund the farmers, not divisive agendas and sexuality. That includes the comment, concludes it. The next is from Camilla, a resident, and reads as follows. I would like to address the council members before they vote for item 7C, to really process in depth your decision. If your motives are not to serve all the people first, then you are thinking of self-first and what you may gain from it. A person who is really wanting to serve the community, God's people, we are all God's people. The heart has to be right, as well as your motives, and all this, I believe, is up to the council members to dig deep to solely serve the people. What I want to leave all of you with is that instead of operating out of the flesh, because that is where we end up, making wrong-term, long decisions. I ask that you operate out of your heart and out of your spirit and not just out of your flesh. Sometimes we all get caught up and not listen to the heart where the truth lies. Your decisions will have generational impact. Please choose wisely, and look what has happened in Burbank and many other districts. Many children and families have been hurt by wrong decisions made in those communities. Please oppose 7C. Thank you. That concludes the online comments, and our first in-person speaker is Delia.
Hi, my name is Delia, born and raised in the SGV. My parents moved here forty-five years ago, and we have three generations currently residing here. We love this city, and I'm so thankful for the opportunity to comment here today. I'm Mexican, Native American, female, who attended San Gabriel Christian School, San Gabriel High School, and I've lived here my whole life, and not once have I ever felt not welcome in this city for my race, gender, and not once has anyone asked or cared about who I'm sleeping with. But what would happen if I started putting those labels on myself, then projecting that label to others? Let's say I go to a store that's always been welcoming, but now I say to the owner, hey, I'm having sex before marriage, but that's okay because I'm going to marry the guy eventually. I want you to know that private information, and I want you to celebrate me for being bold enough to tell you. Now, because I've taken a public stand for my private sexual behavior, I have opened a door for conflict. That store owner may not care, or he may be Muslim, and the Quran clearly opposes sex before marriage. Therefore, he says, sorry, I can't support you. So, do you see how issues can arise when people start promoting opinions and private behaviors? As a former professional athlete, I can tell you that I've had LGBT doubles partners, coaches, and friends, and their lifestyle has never been an issue for me to love them. I love them dearly to this day, and the issue would only arise if those friends said to me, hey, I want you to condone and celebrate my private bedroom choices. By this proclamation, he or she is forcing me to stand firm in biblical truth or reject my faith, and that's not inclusive. I shouldn't be forced into that position, especially by city leadership. So, I kindly ask that you oppose item 7C. Please don't spend time in muddy promoting people's sex lives. Let's allocate that to all-inclusive, family-friendly activities such as the farmer's market. Even better, let's spearhead an all-inclusive pickleball committee to build a truly healthy space where all genders, races, ages are welcome anytime. And lastly, I want to close by asking every council member, council member here a simple yes or no question, and by a raise of hands, please share your answer. If you are called to love and care for a person who is bulimic or anorexic, let's say she's five-four, weighs less than eighty pounds, how would you best accomplish that? So, by a raise of hands, who here would affirm that person's belief that they are fat and encourage them to get liposuction and then celebrate the new identity they're claiming? Anybody, audience? Feel free. Okay. So, so who here would not affirm that person, knowing that it could be harmful over time? Anybody? You would not affirm? Okay. So, the point of that exercise is affirming someone's mind-body disconnect is not always the best way to go, so let's make sure we're loving people the right way and the safest way. Let's not spend city time, resources on devices things. Let's come up with a real hundred percent inclusive committee.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Florence Simpson.
I am really going to try not to be the angry activist. They told me to lead with love. I think you already know what I'm going to say. You already had a committee to support San Gabriel's LGBTQ community. You already had a chance to stand up for those who remain in the shadows and do what's right. You already had a chance to be the shining light for young people, to let them know they deserve to be welcomed, safe, and celebrated. Some of you actively participated in gaslighting the LGBT community, which is happening right now in your public comment. Some of you not only participated, but then others of you were complicit and sat silent while our pleas for support were ignored. I don't think you truly realize what it feels like to be marginalized, the hurt, pain, disillusion, self-doubt you've created, especially those who are most vulnerable. My recommendation is simple, that you right the wrongs, you truly stand up for the community. You either reinstate the Here Commission, or at least create a permanent committee to support the LGBTQ+ community, along with the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. There is no ad hoc committee that is acceptable. We are not a one-and-done issue. We are not an annual pride proclamation in June and a photo op to say you're an ally. If you fall short again with anything less than a permanent committee with proper representation, we will turn our backs on you, just as you have turned our backs on us. And we will work directly with larger groups, such as the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center. I truly hope that you open your minds and hearts, you realize that you have lit the match that killed the Here Commission and that is causing this right now. Have the courage to make the right decision, the right choice. This is your opportunity to right a wrong and stand up and make a difference. You stood right here, you took a photo with that proclamation, own up to it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Stacia Cato.
Esteemed members of the city council, thank you for your time. My name is Stacia Cato. My pronouns are she/her. I'm mom to a beautiful adult daughter, a bright woman full of potential, who felt that she did not belong, because my daughter is transgender. When she came out to me, it was a no-brainer to love and support her. She's my child. We'll navigate this together. My life changed for the better. I now know how much more love and affirmation is available in the world. I didn't understand true allyship before, not with my upbringing as a Roman Catholic, a child of immigrants, and a corporate leader. I thought I was a DEI champion in my position at Toyota, but I was wrong. My child gave me the gift of knowing and loving a transgender person. The PFLAG Chapter here in San Gabriel saved our family. I didn't know how to support my child, how to protect her, how to advocate for her rights, but it was the gentle parents of the PFLAG Chapter who shared their stories with me that with authentic affirmation, their LGBTQ children thrived. And now I share my story. Now, I serve as the president of the PFLAG San Gabriel Valley API Chapter. Last winter, I was elected as the Southern Pacific Regional Director for PFLAG National, supporting sixteen PFLAG chapters and growing, from Santa Barbara to San Diego and Hawaii. I've learned there are real consequences to our behaviors that we think are supportive. Intent is important, but impact is much more so. It's more than the month of June, rainbows and pride parades. It's ensuring LGBTQ+ people are safe, empowered, and loved in our communities with real actions. It's hard for LGBTQ+ people and those who love them, people like my daughter and me, when someone who has real power to make a difference doesn't do so, and then shows up at a pride parade waving a flag and taking photos, the impact is painful. I'm here to make one ask and one invitation. I ask that the city council form a standing subcommittee for the review of matters impacting the community of San Gabriel. Have LGBTQ+ members on it and have it open to public comment, because policy and practice for a community needs to involve the community and requires sustained effort over the long term. Nothing about us without us is a phrase the disability community has long used, and we share that sentiment. I invite the city council to meet with me and other members of the community, including local leaders and clergy, in a judgment-free setting, to share more education, because how we support the LGBTQ community has consequences for our youth. Safety for them starts with creating a safe place to have difficult conversations. PFLAG's work is not only advocacy, it's support and education as well. Thank you.
The next speaker is Viki Goto.
Good evening. I'm Viki Goto, the former chair of the Here Commission. If the San Gabriel City Council was actually interested in supporting the LGBTQ+ community and addressing the issues that are of concern to them, you had the perfect opportunity to launch the All Are Welcome program this month in recognition of pride. All Are Welcome is a safe and affirming space program for the LGBTQ+ community that was carefully designed by the Here Commission over the course of more than a year, with input from subject matter experts, collaboration with the LGBTQ+ serving organizations, and community engagement. But instead, this council chose to reject the program and cancel the entire Here Commission. And the hateful comments that we've heard here tonight are the exact reason this program is critically needed. Your scramble to create an ad hoc subcommittee now that Pride Month is already underway is a pathetic and futile attempt to repair your reputation. An ad hoc subcommittee made up of yourselves has no expertise, no LGBTQ+ voice, no accountability to San Gabriel's residents, and no credibility whatsoever. In short, it's another performative, empty gesture. And attending Alhambra and Monterey Park's pride parade and festival to take your photo with other elected officials does not make you an ally. Neither does printing out a piece of paper every June. Your actions to uplift the LGBTQ+ community and using your position of privilege to advocate for their rights and safety is the measure of a true ally. And for anyone in the community who would like to celebrate the spirit of pride, there are numerous events taking place throughout the San Gabriel Valley this month as part of the SGV Pride Tour in La Canada, Flint Ridge, El Monte, West Covina, Altadena, La Puente, and the City of Industry, Whittier, Baldwin Park, Glendora, and Pasadena. And thank you to the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center for your leadership in creating the tour, and for any LGBTQ+ youth who are ages thirteen to eighteen who are looking for summer activities, please check out Rainbow Labs and its one bold summer program that is starting soon. I wish everyone a happy and meaningful Pride Month. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more speaker cards.
So, it's now time for us to discuss. So, who would like to go first?
I guess I'll go first. Yeah, I would like to advocate for an ad hoc committee, just like we voted initially, and this ad hoc committee is bringing back recommendations. Some of those recommendations could be a permanent, it could be ongoing services and programs that are stand, you know, standing forever and ever, but I think we need to have those conversations. I would like to be on that committee. There's been some good questions on both sides this evening that we can address, but we need to come together and, and begin the process of healing, of coming together. And again, this ad hoc committee would bring it back to the council, so the council as a whole can decide, you know, what, what's the best approach. So, my recommendation again is for the ad hoc committee, and I would like to be one of the two council members on the committee.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, I'm sorry, you have to keep quiet. So, now, we have, this is not a motion yet. This is two discussion. So, any other colleagues would like to, yes, council member?
Yeah. Well, like last council meeting, last two council meeting, I, for my feeling, it's if we dissolve the Here Commission, we, I suggest have the ad hoc committee. But after I listened to current, the both sides, the public comments, I feel maybe it's not ready for the ad hoc committee, because the community still not believed our ad hoc committee to do some proper way to do that. Maybe we can let us, our city staff to the research, how can we, like, let our city is inclusive, multicultural? It's also still acting like some research, like the mission for the Here Committee is established, right? So, I, I, it's, it's, I thanks the, all the, the, the people submit the, the public comments, give me the some, like, some thought to, I still want to listen to our, our rest of the council member, the, the comments, then help me to, how to make the, the right decision for our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Victor. How about Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is the issue, the same, I'll say the same thing that I've been saying consistently, which is, when we get into issues like this, it is political, no matter what one wants to say, and there's going to be divisiveness, whether people want it or not. These are issues that people aren't going to agree on. I, I originally said, yes, this is fine, let's start a, a committee, but now listening, I'm, I'm asking, I'd like to ask our staff and council, like, what, what is this commission going to do? Like, what's the goal? And I do agree with some of the comments that, and, and both, actually, people that support it and don't support it said an ad hoc committee is not the way to go. And, and that was both from the group as well as individuals. I don't know what a standing committee would do. I, I think this is, just like the Here Commission, in my opinion, this goes far afield of what we're tasked to do as a, a city council. So, I mean, so, when I look at this, I'm like, why are, why are we as a council getting into this issue? It's an issue. It's not, it's not something we can resolve. It's not, not within our power to resolve this conflict. Yes, there's lots of private organizations that do that, there's lots of groups that do that, that could bring stuff to the council. I don't know that an ad hoc committee is going to do anything. I don't know that a standing committee is going to do anything. So, for me, now listening to this, it's, it's, once again, just like the Here Commission, I don't think it's going to accomplish anything other than start bringing national political issues into our local, our local community that don't really, they don't belong in front of this council, unless the council's doing something or our policies are discriminating against somebody, then I could say, yeah, we need, we need to fix that. I don't see a, a council action that is discriminating against anybody here, so I, I wouldn't support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. So, Councilmember Chan, please.
Yeah, the comments tonight have been very
Yeah, that, the comments tonight have been very helpful to me. But I also kind of think about, looking back on my comments, the first time this issue came around, I still, I think I stand by my assessment that this kind of issue is not best suited in the city council at all. Again, as Councilmember Harrington said, unless we're doing, we as a city, our, our policies are doing something that are discriminatory, then we, we need to fix that. But since I don't think they are, I still kind of go back to what I said last time about, I think this issue and the support of LGBT community would be best handled by organizations, private organizations, and charitable organizations that are built to support these kind of things. And so that's, that's where I am. Thank you. I yield.
Well, thank you. Okay, so, first of all, I think the ad hoc committee is something that we have, it's already, at a time when we dismissed the Here Commission, that we had already made a certain, like, level of promise. We would do something related to reach out to the LGBTQ plus community. So I think, first of all, the ad hoc doesn't really cause a financial impact to the city plus you. And second, I think this is, this is more like a liaison. So we, I believe, there must be some reason that LGBTQ has brought up, brought in their concern about, they don't feel safe or they don't feel like being accepted. And actually, in our city level, I believe it's, it will be a good way that we have a, a channel that start a dialogues that will be able to assist those community, they feel like we do care. But also, if there's anything, just like Councilmember Harrington said, that any policy that will be against the certain group, then we should really bring it back and we will have a discussion and make another amendment or decisions on our policy. So for me, I would like to, well, except our Vice Mayor Menchaca voluntarily would like to be a member, I would like to nominate our council member Ding to be another liaison and to reach out to our community. And this community will be considered as just a conversation. We are not really involved to any policymaking, but you can bring that to our council and we can discuss. And I think this is a good start because we, I don't want people feeling that we dismissed the Here Commission and then we close all the doors about a certain community, they feel like we don't care, we do. Because they're part of them, they, they are part of us. So, anyone counts. I, I would say everyone, we, I would like to respect them, you know, fairly. And if they believe this is something they need, let's do something and I think result will tell. So, so now, do I have any motion that my colleagues would like to, motion of this item?
Well, I'll make the motion to establish the ad hoc committee with myself and Councilmember Ding as the liaisons.
Okay, so I have a motion by...
Okay, because, thanks to the mayor, who nominated me down the subcommittee liaison, thank you very much, but I based on the current, the public comments, I think it's not the, still, like, public comments, I want, want the, like, very correct, clear direction for the ad hoc committee. So I think it's, it's, for myself, it's not like a current, it's the right time to do that. Because the, I wonder, like, hopefully this, the staff can do the more research to help us to make a right decision.
But Councilmember, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I love to serve it, okay, the meeting I don't want yet, but, but I just saw that, I listened to both sides, the, the public comments, okay. So, so, so that's, okay, I, I'm concerned, okay.
Let me just add, you know, when we have the ad hoc committee meeting, that's when we could start setting the parameters. I mean, we had questions this evening that needed to be answered. The ad hoc committee with the staff could do that. But just to throw it back to the staff, I, I just think it would be better for us to be more involved, more hands-on than that. There is a need of programs and services, we just don't know what's a good fit. Other cities do a variety of things, that's those cities. What makes sense in our city? And it's much better for us as council members to at least start leading that effort. Again, it's got to be approved by the full council, but we need to start the process. And this ad hoc committee will allow us to start that process as opposed to waiting and waiting and waiting. So I, I ask you to rethink.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's, I support have to, before I have the dismin, okay, last two council meeting, but it's really, thanks to all the, the public comments. So, people still not trust our ad hoc committee, they feel like maybe it's not a transparency enough. So maybe it's not the really, like, solve the public concern, so that's, that's the...
Well, but doing nothing doesn't solve the public concern either. I mean, this is, we're doing something. And, and again, it would be the five of us being involved, but we need leadership, we need to have at least two council members to start the process. You know, we've all listened to both sides, but we need to do something, not just kick the can down the road or just do nothing. So I'm asking you to please, you know, be part of this committee and to vote to have it.
But, my, okay, go ahead. I just have a question of staff, once again. I, I remember when the Here Commission was, the discussion came up, we did discuss possibly forming committees, but it wasn't just LGBTQ plus, it was homelessness, mental health, a few other things. So I don't know how this is, we're focused right now on LGBTQ, because that was the title of this. Why didn't we have a homelessness ad hoc committee today? Why didn't we have a mental health? It seems to go right into this, and that's kind of my point. This is going into a political issue rather than homelessness, we can look into it, what can the city do better? We are not going to solve an LGBTQ issue. It's not going to happen. This is a national issue. The city doesn't take a position. This is a private thing, like, I think a lot of the, the, the discussion was from public comment. So my point is, what are we going to do as an ad hoc committee that's going to solve a problem, a current problem, that a private, a private entity isn't better suited to do that, that's their sole focus? That we're charged with paving the streets, we're charged with all of, you know, providing police and fire protection. We do that for everybody equally at all times. We, the city isn't saying, okay, you're a certain sexual orientation or you're a certain gender, so we're not serving you. That's not how our city operates. So if there are, if there are issues that are coming up, that are coming to council, we'll hear about it. It's not, we don't need a committee to go looking for it. Believe me, if someone gets discriminated against, in this day and age, you're going to hear about it immediately. People are not afraid to complain. So my point is, what is this ad hoc committee's purpose? It doesn't really have a stated purpose other than, hey, we're going to meet and discuss LGBTQ issues and support. That doesn't mean anything to me, it really doesn't. So I, I agree with Councilmember Ding that this isn't the time, we don't even have any issue in front of us to where there's a, there's a, we're, we're looking for a problem, it's a solution looking for a problem rather than a problem that we're trying to solve. LGBTQ plus isn't something to solve, it's, it's, and to say, this person's an ally, this person's not an ally, you're getting once again into politics. And it's not, it's not the charge of our council to do politics. It's the challenge, we're here to support everyone equally at all times. And now we're picking out one group to support, we're all equal except for now this group, we're supporting you a little more than the other groups. Then you're picking out someone specifically to support. I mean, I, I, if this is not political, what if I came along and said, oh, I want to support this group but not that group? I want to have a committee to study, how are we going to support this specific demographic? We're getting right into intersectionality, which is not what our council is here to do. We're getting right into, and you start going down that path, at what point do you stop on that path? Where do we stop? We start picking out, okay, now we have to focus on this group and then that group and that group. Our job is not to focus on a group, our job is to represent everybody at all times equally. And once we find an issue where we can't do that, then we can form a committee. If we can't support everybody equally and access to everything for everybody at all times, then we should form a committee, like, why can't we let these, this group into this venue? Or why, why, why does this group feel they can't come to this area? Then we have a problem. I haven't, I haven't found, I haven't found an, an issue or an area where we're not servicing everybody equally at all times. Once we find that, let's form a committee. But other than that, I don't see it.
So let me bring an example, like, we, we did tackle mental health by having a partnership with Chinatown Services. So now, we have the free referral services for whoever wants to, who needs them. It's a variety of services, but mental health appears to be the, the main focus, it's our community's recreation center. That's what I'm thinking about, is having the support groups, whether, there's so many different groups out there, but maybe we can start creating partnerships with them. It's not a matter of saying, you know, it's this way or that way, but having those services, having those programs available. That's what I would like this committee to focus on, and also the, the list of questions that were brought up tonight, you know, address those questions too. That's what I, I think it's important to have a committee.
Yeah, it's, we, also like, I, like, you already, the Vice Mayor Menchaca mentioned, like, want to have the mental health, the help, we have cooperated with the AYC and the Chinatown Service Center. So, so that's why I say maybe ad hoc committee, based on right now, it's not really some direction. We need, we need, we need, like, maybe city staff, maybe cooperate with some local nonprofit organization, okay, they, especially, I listen to LGBTQ, the, the voice, right? And consider their, their consideration. So if I was, the, maybe how to cooperate with the local, some nonprofit organization to help the, the group, and not just, actually, not just for the LGBTQ. I know that even our, our city is, it's a lot of the population is, it's, it's falling born the immigration. So the new immigration, they have a lot of concern, they are a lot of, like, fear, they are a lot of, like, feel it's not a welcome too. Even, I, I just bring out, maybe people, I just for the factor, undocumented immigration, it's same thing, right? Yes, no whether the people's, it's a welcome or non-welcome, the undocumented immigration, but they, they have the human rights too, right? They should have the voice too for their community, even women, right? It's stop Asian hate, we have, I glad we have the cooperate with the AYC, have the program for the stop Asian hate. It's same, similar method. We, maybe we can create a this kind of relationship, probably maybe the more functional, better than have the ad hoc committee. That's my concern, you know?
Okay. Any council member would like to say something? Okay, so in, in response of the, so many comments, I think, first of all, I think that everyone has a little bit confused about the purpose and the reason of why we need to have an ad hoc. And also, the ad hoc, our, our treaty is not a regular committee, this is just a temporary committee, because we need to find the, an angle, you know, a, a channel, a, a proper dialogues that with those people, they, they raise their voice, say, we want help. So I think this is the purpose, and also, there's a, we would dissolve this ad hoc once a, a specific task is completed. When I say specific task, that somehow is not really advocating something, because just like a, a Councilmember Harrington mentioned that, we are not, there's an issue many places, but to me, this is some voices, they said, I don't feel I'm living in San Gabriel, I don't feel safe enough, I don't feel that I've been accepted. So I think this too representative, it's more like an outreach to those community and listen to them and say, okay, what city can, is city, is there anything that city can do better that they feel that we can make them safer? Also, I think, of course, homeless issue is another things. And homeless issue is not a problem that we are able to solve permanently. But if any group, we say API group, or any, we call it minority group, they raise their voice and they say, I need help, I, I don't feel I'm safe living in this city, then I think we need another ad hoc. Because this is a place where we can discuss the task and the reason why we need to have, create a new channel and then just open a dialogue. And we dissolve once we have already, maybe we come up with a, I'm sorry, do you have a tissue? Just allergy. Thank you. No, I'm not crying, I'm the allergy. It's, it's really bad, I got a...
Me too.
Just come up with, like, the eyes is, hold on, no. Very dramatic, no. But, but to me, I think this is a, a very short-term task that we are accumulate some conclusion. And maybe they will come up with, okay, I think this is something we can outsource to other organizations that they're able to help, and the city will have something, our staff will team up with them for something else. But at least, this is not a purpose to, to convert some other people's concept to this concept. We are not trying to change people's mind, we are trying to see what we can do better for the community. So every one of them, I would say, they are all the same. So if they have a question, they can come to me, no matter who they are, where they come from, what's their sexual orientation, to me, they're all the same. So this is, I think, ad hoc committee, we can define as a, just a platform, and it's a temporary, and will dissolve once we have, find out a solution or a channel that will be helping them better. So I would say, ad hoc committee, we should really consider to have one, but we can just set up a time, that maybe a few months, maybe a year, but when we have, bring up something that you have concluded, and when you talk to those group and they say, oh, okay, we understand your concern, then we can reach out to other organization, then, I, I think that will be a very smooth transition channels to, you know, we can make everyone as a one. We don't really want to eliminate anyone out of the field. So that's my comment. So now we have a, a motion from Vice Mayor Menchaca. Do I have a second? Okay, I'm not crying.
I hope, but the rest of our council member, if we really need the ad hoc committee, so do the research, so how can we, like, do the, the, really consider all welcome, the, the group to, so we, I need a more detailed direction. So we just do the study, so they'll come back, see, we really like, or, another choice, it's, it's listen to the, the group, whatever they consideration, then it's city, bring the city council meeting to discuss, so, so what's the future we can do, you know? Yeah.
Okay, so now, we have one motion on table, so let's take care of the motion first. If the motion does not pass, then we go for the next, how about that? Oh, we don't have a second?
I don't have a second, yeah, yeah. So I just, my suggestion, to listen to the rest of our, our council member, to think about it, yeah.
Because we know we have a one motion, so I will second on this. So that's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of three, two.
Okay, thank you. So next item, please.
Consideration of resolutions relating to...
Consideration of resolutions relating to the calling of San Gabriel's general municipal election to be held on November 5th, 2024. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now, and I will make this presentation for you this evening. In order for the election to take place, it is necessary for the city council to adopt several resolutions by a two-thirds vote, calling the general municipal election for the election of two council members, requesting Los Angeles County to consolidate the election with the statewide general election and provide related services, and adopting regulations for candidate statements. In addition, pursuant to recent legislation, the registrar recorder county clerk has implemented a program for posting candidate statements online on a dedicated page on their website in lieu of having a printed statement in the hard copy sample ballot voter guide. This option would have a reduced fixed fee as opposed to a printed candidate statement. Allowing this option is at the city council's discretion. It is included in resolution number 2434, but council may direct staff to remove it and not allow this option. So the recommendation is for the adoption of resolutions number 2432, calling for the holding of the election, resolution 2433, requesting the board of supervisors to consolidate, administer, manage, and oversee the election, and resolution 2434, establishing regulations for candidate statements with or without the option for online candidate statements. As the cost of a candidate statement, either printed or online, is paid by the candidate, the option the council chooses does not affect the fiscal impact. Cost of holding the election is estimated at $95,000. And that concludes the report, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. Does any council member have questions to our chief city clerk for this report?
Uh, yes.
Yes, councilmember Chen.
Thank you. All right, Sharon, thank you, very well done, very succinct. Just two quick, easy questions. First one, regarding staff recommendation number two, resolution number 24-33, regarding consolidating with the county. So is there any benefit or cost savings to not consolidating with county? How does?
We actually don't have the option of not consolidating.
Oh, so it's another one?
That requires us to consolidate.
It's one of those things where it doesn't matter anyway, because the county's going to make us do what they, or the state's going to make us do.
Historically, it's more expensive for a city to do a standalone election than it to consolidate.
Okay, thank you. Second thing I had was regarding staff recommendation number three, resolution number 24-34. I looked at the language of the, of the resolution, and why is it only, the, why does it only refer to only the, the next election, instead of from now on, forever and ever, until we change it?
Because there's changes to the election code.
Okay.
Every election.
Oh, okay, so.
We handle one at a time.
We do one at a time.
And when we get to the next election, we have to look at what may have changed for that next election.
I see, so we don't just, like, do a blanket? Okay, all right, thank you. I yield, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other council member would like to address the issue? Yes, councilmember?
Yeah, it's a recommendation, have the candidate's statement result without option online, candidate's statement, so just, it's from my understanding, it's just a regular paper candidate's statement, then plus, you can choose online statement, too.
The legislation actually only allows one or the other. So council can choose whether or not to give that option, but the candidate has to choose either no statement at all, or they can do the written, the paper version, or they can do the online version, but not both.
They cannot do the both.
That's the way the legislation is written.
That's interesting. It's nothing to lose, right? Okay, talk to the state.
You know how much I've been complaining about the state this, this evening? Yeah, that's your answer.
Okay, so we can now the local control, too?
Nope. Welcome to California. Welcome to California.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Ding. Anyone else? So chief city clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have a comment that was submitted online, both anonymously and with a name, with the same wording, and that comment reads as follows. Dear San Gabriel City Council, dear Mayor of San Gabriel, and fellow city council members, as a voter in San Gabriel City, I am enthusiastically concerned about various activities in this city. I have recently discovered some behaviors that I think are unfair campaigning, and I feel puzzled. I would like to ask the city council whether it is legal and whether it is fair and just. The government council explains, one, candidate Jorge Herrera Avila uses a Chinese name. As a given name, seems to have almost nothing to do with his name, and they give the, the Chinese characters. Does it violate some fair and equitable legal provisions of the California election law regarding the use of Chinese names? Candidates born in the United States who do not have a Chinese birth certificate proving they were born with a Chinese name could be affected by this California election law. Candidates must, in accordance with the relevant requirements of the election department, strive to find and provide written materials to prove that their Chinese names meet the requirements of California election laws. Two, the title used by candidate Jorge Herrera Avila in the campaign in April this year, current city councillor. I checked the current city councillor without him, he has never been the current city councillor. Please refer to the attached picture to confirm whether his actions are legal. Moreover, the current member of the Human Equity Access and Relations Commission, otherwise known as HIER, according to the San Gabriel City Council website, around August 2020, council members voted four to one to create the new commission, with Councilman John Harrington casting the lone vote against, saying the city's municipal code and laws are not discriminatory. Some residents agreed with Harrington, arguing the HIER commission doesn't need to be formed. Is it legal for a candidate to claim to be a current member of this long-defunct committee? Is it misleading voters about the validity of holding public office? Candidate George Herrera introduces himself in an April 2024 campaign ad as follows. Current city, San Gabriel City Council member, current member of HIER, earned a bachelor's degree in political science from California State University, Los Angeles. Three, does it violate the principles of fairness and justice, and is it legal for a candidate to campaign for himself in the name of California Treasurer Fiona Ma's assistant or representative? May I ask if Ms. Ma, Xi Yunn, has officially hired him as an assistant or representative to allow him to participate in various activities to, to build momentum for his own election? Please ask the city council to inform Fiona Ma whether it is actually being used legally. Faithfully submit to San Gabriel City Council, please explain. That concludes the comment. And then, there's one final comment that was submitted in two different names, with the same wording, Ying Wang and Ying Zhao, and it reads as follows. Dear San Gabriel City Council members, greetings. The deceitful actions of Jorge Herrera, one of the candidates running for San Gabriel City Council in 2024, have caused confusion among many San Gabriel residents. I hope the city council will take this matter seriously and provide an explanation to the public. One, Jorge Herrera has written in Chinese that he is an incumbent San Gabriel City Council member on his campaign materials for April 2024. However, we do not see his name on the list of San Gabriel City Council members. This is misleading, please see the attached evidence. Two, during his fundraising campaign in May, Jorge Herrera has repeatedly promoted his campaign in the WeChat groups organized by AYC, please see attached evidence. Can the city council inform us if such, such actions are compliant with regulations? The Chinese community highly respects AYC for its contributions to the entire community. Three, Jorge Herrera frequently uses the name of state treasurer Fiona Ma to promote his campaign for San Gabriel City Council at various events. Is Fiona Ma aware of this? Furthermore, Jorge Herrera often crashes others' events at the last minute without an invitation, takes photos, and then uses these photos to promote his campaign. This is shameless behavior that misleads many community members into thinking their peers support him without knowing the truth. This is deceitful. I sincerely hope the city council will take this matter seriously and inform the public. Thank you. That concludes the comments, and I have no speaker cards.
Thank you, chief city clerk. And now, it's for our council to discuss, so who would like to start?
I guess I'll start. The only question I have is the public comments, is there anything the, the city attorney would like to respond? Because I've also heard the same comments, and I know the answer, but I think the public should hear it.
Yes, please, city attorney.
Thank you, honorable mayor, councilmembers. The manner in which the gentleman is campaigning, or is projecting himself, is, is protected by First Amendment rights. The ultimate test is obviously, those who vote will vote in a manner consistent with what is true and isn't, hopefully. The city and the city council are not in a position to take any action to stop or prevent a candidate from saying things that they're saying. Obviously, the membership of the city council is a public record, so public knows who is on the city council and who isn't. But as far as the council or the city staff being able to stop somebody from saying what they're saying, there's simply no way of, of the city being able to do that. If someone in the public feels that some criminal laws are being broken, that's obviously should be reported to the attorney general's office or the district attorney's office. But as far as the city council's ability to control that behavior, unfortunately, we don't have that.
Thank you. And no further questions.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, vice mayor. Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, is it, I think for this, because it involves the Chinese community, is it possible have, like, mayor to have the, like, Chinese translation, what's the issue, that public commerce issue, and let the, our city, what's the city stand, like, the city attorney to say that, yeah? Is it possible?
Is it possible for the mayor to translate what I just said? That's up to the mayor, absolutely.
Is that the only question you have?
Vice Mayor Menchaca has mentioned that, so I think that maybe it's a language barrier, maybe let the, because of the issue, it's in the Chinese community.
So you want me to proceed that with, like, translating to our residents?
Yeah.
Mandarin, Cantonese, and Taiwanese? It takes so long.
I, I think.
He's a cry.
Yeah, Mandarin is enough, okay.
As a suggestion, potentially, a transcript of this portion can be translated and posted on a webpage.
Okay, okay.
So, so people can, can read it in whatever language.
Okay, include, include the city attorney, the, the response, right?
Right. I was speaking specifically of, of, of that part, but many, any other part of it, if, if so desired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I think this is more appropriate that we can.
Yeah, okay.
It's more formal.
Good.
Councilmember Chen?
Oh, what? I, I'm just ready to make a motion to approve the, the staff recommendation, all three items.
Okay, we have a motion made by councilmember Chen.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor? If we can specify, if it's with or without that provision?
The councilmember Harrington wanted to have the comments, too. Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Apologies. Jumped the gun.
Yes, councilmember Harrington, please.
I was just saying that we need to decide on the, on item three, are we doing it with or without the option? Because we could just foreclose the option, or we can leave it up to the candidates. So I just wanted to clarify in the motion, was it the full with, with the option of being online?
Yeah, that's what I would.
Okay, I'll second. Let's give the candidates the option.
It's only online, you mean?
No, no, the candidate gets to choose.
Choose.
So if there's the option, the candidate can decide which one they want.
Yeah.
If we say no online, then the candidate can only do paper.
Oh, I see.
So this just leaves the candidates' option.
Yeah, okay.
The city's just letting them do what they want.
So, so, so with still, still the staff recommendation, right?
What's that?
The current, still the staff.
Yeah, staff says we have to decide with or without, the staff is not deciding.
So no change, right? Okay.
With or without, so we're choosing with.
Choosing with. With the option to do online or on paper?
Staff is giving us the choice.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Take off the without, right? Okay, okay.
I forgot to, I was just, I was assuming I meant with.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So I will second the, the motion with the option to be online or on paper.
Thank you, councilmember Harrington. Okay, so the motion made by councilmember Chen and second by councilmember Harrington, please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero with item three, with the option.
Okay, thank you. So next item, please.
Consideration of friendship city partnership with Banqiao District in New Taipei City, Taiwan, Republic of China, as well as consideration of a cultural exchange trip to Taiwan by San Gabriel representatives. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now. City manager Lazaretta will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will make this short and sweet, and then turn it over to Mayor Wu for any further question or clarification. But the council will recall, last year, we had a request from the Haka Federation in order to have a sister city partnership with Banqiao, a district in New Taipei City in Taiwan. At that time, the city council directed staff to come back with a, a formal policy that the city could follow and have groups be able to apply and, and follow for requests for friendship cities and sister cities. And so, early this year, we adopted that policy, and since that time, the Haka Federation has submitted another request to become a sister city with San Gabriel and the Banqiao District in New Taipei City. So the first question before the council tonight is whether or not to approve that partnership. There's been a little bit of confusion, the original request was for a sister city partnership, not just a friendship city, so the council could choose to, to do a sister city partnership instead of the friendship city partnership. Our policy seems to allow either, and they fit within that policy, so that's a question for the council. The second question is, is that Mayor Wu has been asked to travel to Taiwan for many reasons, one of which is to sign the partnership agreement, and then there are, listed in the staff report, other reasons for economic development, tourism, smart cities, disaster preparedness, and other reasons that Mayor Wu would travel to Taiwan. Mayor Wu has offered to travel on his own, pay for his own way, and represent the city, but he has also requested that there be two other options, and certainly, any council member could choose to pay their own way and accompany Mayor Wu on that trip. But the other two options that Mayor Wu wanted to present to the council, and I feel a little strange speaking for you, like you're not here, so feel free to, to jump in, the other two options were to have staff accompany, similar to when Walian County visited our city, they brought department heads and other staff members with them. And so, option two before you, for the cultural travel portion of the staff report, would pay just for staff to travel, and any council members would pay their own way if they choose to travel. And then, the third option would be to have the city pay for not only staff, but also any council members, including Mayor Wu, to travel to Taiwan. So with that, I turn it over to Mayor Wu for any clarification, and I'm here, as well as Martin, again, to answer any questions that council.
Thank you very much, Mark, for the presentation. So before we draft, we will start our discussion, or the questions to the staff. Chief city staff, do we have any presentation from Haka Federation today?
I believe I sent the presentation stuff to Adam.
Okay, so there is a presentation, so we should go with the presentation. So we should go with the presentation now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I jump into my presentation, I think we have done that last year. And since like the manager was mentioning that you guys don't have any policy at that time, now you do. So really appreciate that you guys can consider that sincerely. So we can fulfill our duty as a bridge to bring the two great cities together. I'm speaking on behalf of Hakka Federation of U.S. My name is Pierre Sau. And supposedly, our president, Tom Chen, is, should be presenting this material at this time. But unfortunately, he has a vacation book on that kind of a, not able to cancel the vacation plan, you know? So he's not able to show up here today. However, we do have our chief supervisor, Carol Lee, and also our vice president, Jason Chen, here to support this event as well. And so before I jump into the presentation, I have to give you guys a little bit of background again about Hakka Federation of U.S. We are the organization of Hakka people for the past thirty-some years in Southern California. And we do have a lot of residents in city of San Gabriel, including, you know, the business people as well. And I personally come to San Gabriel City often to participate all the event in Hilton or Sheraton, all that kind of a great stuff. So, and the also Hakka people, as you know, in Mandarin is really called guest people. Because we are the people, we migrate from middle of China to all over the China, you know, during the, you know, change of dynasty, during the war, you know, amongst, between changing of the dynasty. So, and right now, I think there are around like eighty million people globally for Hakka people. So we are a group of people that cannot be ignored. And so, we have also have a lot of Hakka people in Banqiao District. And just among our, you know, private citizen communication, we come up with this kind of idea. And we really appreciate the San Gabriel City Council can consider our proposal. And so let me introduce you guys quickly about Banqiao City, even though I have done that last year, but just to refresh your memory. So this is the picture of Taiwan where the Banqiao is part of the New Taipei City, which is part of brown area on top of the Taiwan. And this also show you where the overall district in New Taipei City. As you know, that the, like on the top, there's a Tensue City that's already a sister city with San Marino. And also, we have Xinzhong as a sister city with Hambra. And also, we have a Suling District as a city city with Walnut. And also, the Sansha District is a sister city of Diamond Bar. And also, we have the Yonghe District is a sister city of Montreal Park. So you can see, you know, the, there's a lot of districts within the Taipei City. They have that kind of sisterhood established already. And this is about the Banqiao. Banqiao is about, you know, twenty-three point one four a square kilometer, which is amounts to around like nine miles, nine square miles. And they will have a very dense population. We have five hundred fifty-three thousand and three hundred sixteen people in that district. Is the biggest district population-wise among Taiwan. Okay? And the also, is also the capital of the New Taipei City. All the New Taipei City organization, they all reside in Banqiao. So you can see, that's really the center of New Taipei City. And this also show you the, how the Banqiao City is situated, is surrounded by rivers. So next picture, you're gonna see a lot of bridges, you know, connecting, you know, between Taipei City, New Taipei City, and Taipei City. And a lot of other district, they are passing through Banqiao so that they can go to Taipei City, which is the center government of Taiwan, Republic of China. This is a picture of a mayor of New Taipei City. And he, by the way, he used to be the chief police of Taiwan. So if, whenever you plan the trip, so I really encourage that the head of chief, head of police in city of San Gabriel, you can, you know, come along, tag along. So we can communicate with, you know, Mayor Ho about, you know, his experience in governing the, or directing all the police force, in promoting the security in the, in the large city, you know, or the modern city. And this give you the layout of what the Banqiao District Office looks like. They do have a lot of different division handling different section of the public affairs. And the head of the district, the name is Chi Chen Chen. And we happen to be, have the opportunity to visit Banqiao in April. And they give us such a warm welcome, you know? Because we are, we are, we're going over there asking about, you know, establish this, the friendship city or sister city with city of San Gabriel. And then they showed great interest in doing so. And also, the, since the, like I say, the Banqiao is the center of the New Taipei City. So Google, they have new office opened recently. You know, he become the world's largest hardware R&amp;D center based outside of U.S. You know, other than the U.S. has, you know, the major hub of the Google R&amp;D facility. The other one is in Banqiao, Taiwan. So you can see, you know, Banqiao is full of all the modern activity and you can think of. And also, Banqiao with all, with the massive population. So we have like seventeen elementary school, eleven middle school, and the seven high school, and also three universities. You can see, in that nine square miles, we have a lot of educational institute there. And also, because the Banqiao is the center of the New Taipei City, so we are full with all the safe, the art transportation, including the Taiwan High Speed Railroad and Taiwan Railroad, and the also the Taipei Subway. And also, they have a local subway there as well, you know, also. And plus the all the freeway passing through there. And this give you, you know, an idea of all the activity and for the like children's art festival. And also, the New Taipei City Christmas Town, you know, which happened to be the largest party in Taiwan for Christmas. And also, the Halloween, the Feng Street, you know, street dance, that kind of stuff. So it's full with activity with that Banqiao District. And this just showing the picture of all the activity during the Christmas time. It's very colorful, you know? I happened to be there one time, but I did not participate. But the our chief supervisor was there, you know, involving all the, all that activity. Of course, he's not sponsor of any event there, but he participate, you know? He asked all the friend join her to, you know, to see all the different showing of the Christmas festival. And she's really impressed by it. And this again is a, oh, this is a lantern festival in Banqiao as well? It's very colorful and a lot of, you know, the picture cannot describing just very small part of it, you know? So you have to be there to be impressed by all the showing of lantern there. And I believe this city of San Gabriel are gonna have a lantern festival as well. And maybe, you know, there's a great opportunity to exchange there. And the Banqiao also, you know, famous for their, you know, all the medical facility there. There's a large city of Far East Hospital there, and also, you know, multiple hospital there. And the also, you know, the, all the sports arena and the track, all that kind of good stuff there. And Taipei City is the largest city in Taiwan. So they have a lot of funding to support all that kind of stuff. And the also show you the, all the senior activity supported by the local community and local government. And this is also a picture there showing the, all the senior daycare facility. And all the parks, everything, you know? And this just show you some picture of Banqiao there. And the, this just demonstrate that the we Hakka Federation of USA, we are, we are part of the local event community. Like this is the San Gabriel City event that we participate. And this is the Mayor Wu before he was mayor. He was young and fool and all that, you know? And the, and the, so this is another picture that the our Hakka Federation of USA, we support the local charity events. And this our most recent golf tournament. And the, I'm not sure if we sent you guys invitation, but probably not met too many golfer among the city councils. So, but as the picture showing, we do have a good time there. And this is the Hakka Day. It was, it was, there's a great turnout, even though it was pouring rain, you know, outside. And we hold this event in the Mason Institute in Arcadia. And we have a lot of people showing up there. Again, this is a picture we said. And the, this is a picture that the Mayor Wu visiting the Hakka District, Banqiao District, you know, and they met over there. And they also, you know, showing the challenge token there, coin, you know, presented by Mayor Wu there. And they want to return the favor as well. And this is the picture that we visited, we visited Banqiao City to try to establish the sister city relationship. Where we kind of introduced them to the, about the city of San Gabriel. And they really, you know, pour out, you know, all the efforts to welcome us there. And we are really touched by their, you know, overwhelming, you know, supporting of that, the sister city. And this is our meeting there, and they treat us all the, you know, delicacy, all that kind of stuff. And I really encourage you, all the council member, if you have opportunity, you should go over there to let them show your, their hospitality. And this is also another, you know, great reception we had in the local temple. Then they give us the presidential level treatment there. And that's, that was really awesome. And this is the banquet at the end of the day. And the food was great, and people was great, and the drink was great. And then this is just show you our, the, our local activity, you know, as part of Hakka Federation of USA, you know, that doing this year. So with that, I thank you for listening to my presentation. And I really hope that we can make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Sau.
Any question for me?
Oh, yes, any council member will have a questions to Mr. Sau or Mark or me. It's now time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, City, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards and no submitted comment.
Thank you. And now it's time for council discussion. So who would like to start?
I guess I'll start. First of all, I, my understanding is that Hakka Federation is celebrating twenty years. So it's an organization that has longstanding. It fulfills all of our policy for both, well, I was thinking friendship. And I guess you're asking for sister now? But I guess I'm trying to understand, maybe my colleagues could help me. I thought we had kind of a conversation that we would start off as friendship, then move into sisterhood or whatever it's called. So why is it being proposed to go into sister right away versus? Because we have two sister organizations that we've had for a long time, but we don't have any relationship. This is definitely gonna be very different. There is a relationship here. But why wouldn't we start off as friends, friendship, and then kind of evolve into sisterhood?
Okay, well, I think I can answer this part. Well, first of all, thank you so much, Mr. Sau, for the excellent presentation. And I think the reason that they, actually, is that they have proposed to make a sister city instead of friendship city because they just realized that this is something new added to the presentation from last time. That they do have several our surrounding neighboring areas, including the city Walnut, city of Diamond Bar, city of Hambra and Montreal Park and more. They all have a sister city. They are sister city with the New Taipei City District. And Banqiao is the capital of New Taipei City, which is the best, the largest, the most important, the head, you know, the head of whole district. So for some reason, I think this is a really good coincidence because we are about getting the best one throughout the whole, you know, New Taipei City. And this is the main district that is very resourceful. It's like a very high-density city, district. It was a city before it was changed to New Taipei City. It was called Taipei County, and Banqiao was a city. So that's why some of the relationship has been bridged before they have converted from the county to city. Because they have more population than before. And just was being said, that because most of our surrounding neighbor cities, they have a sister city with them. So maybe it will be really appropriate for us to become a sister city with the Banqiao District. Did I answer your question?
Not really, but okay.
Really, really, okay. So we have a lot of.
But I, again, it's just, because I think relationships evolve. I feel like we're going directly into marriage versus engagement. But, you know, I'll listen to my other, my colleagues. And then the other item, it says, you know, three options, no city funding, city funding for staff only, city funding for all participants. And so, you know, again, I want to hear from my colleagues. But I believe that every council member, if they want to go, should pay their own expenses. I'm not comfortable paying, using city funds for that. I hope to attend next year, not this year. I'm already booked for the year. But, and then for staff, city funding for staff, again, I just feel like there's other alternatives right now. We have a lot of expenses coming up. You know, we have a state that's gonna have a lot of shortfalls. You know, we have a state that's going to have a lot of shortfalls. Uh, you know, we have our Fourth of July. We have, um, other expenditures that we'd like to make. And I, I, I'm not comfortable paying for staff using city funds when we have maybe like Zoom meetings. Um, I mean, there's other alternatives, maybe down the road. But again, initially, I just feel like we should be easing into it. And I feel like we're kind of rushed. You know, again, I, I believe this is probably going to be the strongest relationship we, we're going to have because the other two cities, even though it's been decades, there really isn't that connection like with the Hakka Federation. But I, I'm, I, I don't like rushing into it. Uh, but, you know, I, I can be persuaded. So I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Well, thank you, I can answer that part. Uh, well, first of all, I think I have more confidence on this, uh, relationship because compared with the, the formal one that we have in Changhua, we do not have a local association just like Hakka Federation, that they have been here for, I believe, twenty some years already. And financially, I believe they're strong. They are very united. They have all the event and they are actively participate our city event. So I think this is a, it brings me more confidence that they will be able to actively to maintain the relationship on both sides. This is the first reason. And second, I believe, uh, you know, I have no problem at all because to me, I, I have more reason, I will just disclose to you why, uh, that I think this worth us to, uh, become a sister city with the Banqiao District. Um, and also, not only that, uh, for the trip, this is not only to Banqiao, this is only one of that. Uh, I would like to show you this. This is a, uh, this is a document that we just, I just received from the Taiwan Tourism Administration. And this is their, uh, this is a, what is that? The custom clearance, uh, paperwork. And it shows that they are sending us, uh, two thousand five hun- two thousand and fifty-four pounds lanterns to us. Two thousand, it was nine hundred and thirty-two kilograms. And for free, for nothing, shipping us for free, clear that for free, deliver for free, for 10 years. I would like to be there personally. Thank you for the Taiwan Tourism Administration, for their generosity, that to support our cities in future event, especially Lantern Festival. Down the road in the ten, the next 10 years, we are expecting something really could happen. Uh, they are keep donating this. And this is, there's no financial impact to our city. And this is just one another reason why I think it's appropriate that I can be like a multi-task at the same time for one trip. And also, I think, uh, as Mr. Zhao has, uh, has, um, introduced the, the New Taipei City Mayor, actually, he was the head of the police chief in Taiwan, throughout Taiwan. Uh, I think public safety is another issue that we will be focusing on. And I think, uh, he has a very good reputation in Taiwan because his image and he's actually very, um, he, he does really put attention on the public safety for the city that was a more population, 10 times more populations than City of San Gabriel. And I think this will be worth for us to understand that how they can manage that, not only because he's, he was a police chief, but also Taiwan is using a lot of AI. And we are trying to upgrade everything in our city, flock cameras. Um, and also, we will probably implement, implemented some AI system in the future. And I think there is something we, we are able to learn. And, uh, also the, about the, uh, the, besides the public safety, uh, usually have seen that the Google has a new office in Banqiao. Uh, it doesn't mean that we will visit the Google because Google is here. We can visit the original. We don't have to visit the sub-office there. But it, it shows that this is how important is that, is, um, they have chosen that location. And, um, I am not intense to bring, if you remember, Hualian County, they have brought, I believe it's twenty some, uh, what they call the department hats here. I'm not going to do this. And I can be there alone. I can just represent our city alone as a one person, one mayor. That's it. And of course, I really hope that any of my colleagues will be interested in joining me and with our own expense. This is my intention. I would like to spend my own expense and try to benefit our city, just like getting more friendship and make our city become more globalized brand. As long as we are having a third, uh, five-star hotel, care by Hilton, maybe by the end of the year, I truly believe that City of San Gabriel deserve not only the more friendship, but also we should expose ourselves to the world. And, um, we don't have any university while our, our, you know, future sister, uh, well, actually, they have three university. Maybe we have only the Cal State University, San Gabriel of Netflix. But to me, um, this is, um, this is a high-density city. They have like, they are double size of the San Gabriel, but they have 550,000 more population there. Meanwhile, we are having more projects in the city that is more high-rise, more like mixed use. I think this is also a good learning process for us that to understand that the city, just like Banqiao, how they can just keep their public safety, uh, you know, on the road and also how they can maintain the pop, the building that's safe for everyone to live in. We, we cannot spend that much time there because I don't like to spend our city staff's time just for, you know, overseas because that is not the priority things. But I have only one head, I have only one brand. I don't think I'm able to, you know, to absorb every single thing I see. And I probably cannot ask the right questions while other city staff, they are expert on this field. So I would, I, I wouldn't say that's bring all, you know, uh, the department hats with me because that is, that, first, that will cost too much. Second, maybe one person, two person, they are able to collect all enough information. And those information will benefit our city in the future. That is the more purpose is, and we should only spend, I would say, less than a week. So it will be really tough for our staff to go with me because they will just, the next day they wake up in Taipei, they start doing the things, visiting and collecting, talking, conversation with the, all the related document, uh, you know, department of the different government official. And we will make this a trip very condensed and collect everything they can that will bring it back to the city and share that with our department hat. So, uh, I personally will be really happy to pay my own everything expenses. But they will be suffering from a very small, tiny economy class too for the 14 hours flight. And after they finish the tour, they will just fly back and, um, another like maybe 12 hours flight. Then next day, they will come to work. Well, I don't know if that will be like, kind of like a pressuring for our city staff. I will respect their decision as well. But to me, uh, I don't need bring a lot of people from the city because we should keep our city generate in a normal daily basis. But I hope at least like a few of them, they are able to be with me. And I will feel really more confidence because they can always get the right information, ask the right questions and get the solutions back to the city. And let's see if we can anyway collaborate with the resource they can provide and also the knowledge they have or something that we can use to apply to our future cities development. So that's my, um, response.
Thank you. I'll, I'll like to listen to my colleagues.
Yes, anyone else?
Sure. Yes. I, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your description and your explanation about the, the sister city situation. And, and it, it, it does give me a little more confidence the way you described that it's not like a random city somewhere halfway around the world that we've never met before. Like you said, there, there are representatives from that city who live here and Hakka Federation is here. And so they, they, actually, they're not just somewhere way, somewhere far away. They have representatives that are residents in California, in our area. So that, that, thank you. That, that helps me kind of have more confidence that, you know, it's not the same situation as before with random cities. So I, I, based on that, I would probably be okay supporting the sister city status. Uh, on the second issue of, of the, of city funding, that's a little bit harder for me because, um, a, a, as we pointed out, that they, they, their city is bigger than ours in terms of landmass, uh, but they have 10 times the residents. So that, I think their economy is a lot heavier and, and, and more robust than ours. So, you know, in terms of, uh, the request to fund the, our staff to go with you or that one is a little harder for me to, to get behind. But, um, unless, uh, there, you, we may be able to find a way that, uh, the, the host city would be able to help raise funds for the staff to go and the staff would be on their own, I guess, vacation time. You know, because it would, like you said, if you're going to go that far, it is going to be a good week or so, you know. It won't be a two or three days and so, but that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. But again, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, listen to my colleagues. I defer for now.
Well, thank you, council member Chen. I think there's another reason I did not tell you why I want to bridge the, uh, the sister city with the Banqiao because the, their district governor is the same last name as yours.
Well, then that, that's different.
No, but I understand your concern. I really appreciate that. I mean, uh, so who else would like to, yes, council member Harrington?
Yeah, I'll keep it short. I'm fine with the friendship city and evolving into the sister city. I think that's kind of the way we envisioned that originally. That's the way we wrote the policy. And then I'm for no funding, just like I, I think it's something that if someone wants to participate, it's voluntary. Just like I wouldn't vote for myself to travel. I wouldn't vote for someone else to travel. That's just, if I wanted to go, I'd pay for it.
Yes, will you go with me? Or self-funded, right?
We'll talk.
And also, I, I think there's one question from council member Chen that, uh, I think we, we, we should address that too. Uh, I don't believe that we are able to, uh, to ask anyone else, including, uh, the, our future sister city or any, um, local organization or any entity that to support our travel funds. And that is not only because of the dignity of the city, that we are not going there and, but we are visiting them and they should have paid our fund. This is, uh, it, it definitely is not a good, um, you know, presentation that, you know, representing our city. But also, I think this is not really feasible from the FPPC. Uh, so maybe, uh, our attorney can just describe a little bit about this?
All, all of the gift limitations that exist under the FPPC, the limited now, I think is $650 a year or somewhere in that. Uh, and reporting of any gift over $50 are in place. Uh, so, um, having somebody fund the flight to, uh,
Excellent point.
Taiwan would, would not qualify under those limits.
So I think that is, that is the answer from the attorney. Five ninety. So that's. If anything more than a certain amount that we have to report.
Oh, yeah.
More than five ninety, we cannot take that. So I think that, uh, I understand. I mean, um, council member Harrington, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, we're talking about the FPPC real quick. Okay.
Awesome. Yes, council member Ding.
All right. First of all, I want asking the, uh, city attorney. So we have to have the, the friendship city first, then go, go to the sister city? I just asking question, okay.
I don't believe that the policy requires a friendship city status prior to sister city status. We, uh, our policy identifies both.
Okay.
But it's up to the city council to make the selection or do it in steps. But there is no mandate.
Okay.
That a city has to be a friendship city before it can become a sister city.
All right, so that's meaning like, uh, we don't need like a engagement first, then we're, then married, right?
You, you, you can get married on the first date.
Yeah, we don't need the engagement too. So, okay, so that's why I want clarify this situation. Yeah, uh, so from, because the, our city, like, uh, Vice Mayor Denis Mechenko mentioned, we have the two sister city. One also is in the Taiwan and another one is Mexican, right? Mexican, is he, is he right now current have any activity? I asking the Mark?
Uh, no, uh, Councilman Ding, we have not had activity with either of our sister cities in at least a decade.
A decade. So, so for this point, I think we should, first of all, our city, it's, uh, it's multicultural. And, uh, also, we have the Hakka Association. Also, it's in our San Gabriel City. It's a two decade already, right? So, uh, also, their Banqiao District, it's really also sincerely want to create a relationship with us. So for our current, because our multicultural, I suggest go for the sister city right away. And, uh, we can have the, like a communication together to learning something, even like we have the chance with the, uh, like, uh, two months ago with Hualian. It's really give it to, I will impress for the, uh, cultural exchange. And so I, I really want to support it to the sister city right away because we have two sister cities inactive. Why? They have the passion. They love to do that. We have this kind, here, I saw that they have the like, uh, wear the same of uniform too, right? Okay. So, so it's give me the encouragement. So I suggest, uh, have the sister city first. And the second, I, I, I agree that all the colleague. So for the, our council member travel expense, it's definitely out of our own pocket. Okay, we don't want to have our city have this kind of burden. Okay, I also hopefully the Taiwan, uh, the Banqiao, they can understand it because the, we are system difference. I know they, they have the budget, but we don't have budget. Okay. And for the staff, I just asking, also asking the, 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 the city attorney regarding that. And the first question, if local nonprofit organization, they fundraise, especially for our city staff to go to the, uh, the Banqiao, is it proper way to do that? I just question, okay.
I am not aware of any way of getting around the gift prohibitions of the FPPC.
Okay.
Uh, because that, that money presumably be, be a gift to the city to be used for, uh, staff travel. Now, there, there may be a possible, uh, way of funding it through a public purpose. But, um, I, I think that, um, without doing some deeper research than.
Okay, so do the research. Do the research.
I, I, I don't think that, um,
Okay.
there is a, a, a way of avoiding, um, the, the gift regulations of the.
Okay, but they're just dedicated for the city staff. So not for the council member.
F, FPPC regulations apply to all.
Other, other, other employee?
All higher-ranked employees, anybody with.
Okay.
discretionary decision-making.
Okay, okay, all right.
Powers are subject to, um, FPPC regulations.
Okay, so not just elected.
Not just elected.
Oh, okay, didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For teaching.
Yeah. So Mark, you want to?
I, I was just going to say, even if it were something that the city attorney felt we could push the envelope, I personally would not want to put the city in that position and have it come back and embarrass my bosses at some point that they did something out of the kindness of their heart or with good reasoning, but it came back to, to bite us in the butt later on. So I would just pass on that and, and recommend that the staff do the same. Not that I wouldn't love to support the trip. Not that I wouldn't love to support the trip, but I don't want to put you all in that position.
Okay. The second question it's asking, so because recently, I remember, here it's listing the Ban Chao, but I remember the mayor Wu have experience for the Temple City, have the sister city with the... Hualien, yeah. So what do they handle? They have the, they have the city staff go with it, or just the council member or mayor?
Okay, well, thank you. So that's a question, right?
Yeah.
Well, to answer councilmember Ding's question, first of all, that had happened in 2018. So that is pretty similar things like when Hualien, they have sent a delegation to our city, to San Gabriel. Live in city, but then they make a friend with Temple. It's okay. That the, you know, the way that we did was, at that time, I was, I was not the elected. So there, the government officials, you know, participate, delegates, you know, be delegates to Hualien, and they build up the relationship. And, but there is no city staff that time, because they have not a clear, they didn't know that what is exactly targets where they want to focus on. It's just more like a softening, like a friendship, and just understand the cultural more exchange. So they do have their, their team is come with like their mayor and their council member. That time mayor was Nenet Fish. And that was a former mayor of city of Temple City, and also the council member William Man and his family. Then I believe there's Steve, who is the school board, not school board, I'm sorry, they have a sister city association, and attended that with them. And also, they handle about the school, the students exchange with Australia. And they are building up the new, more educational channels to, with Hualien. So they were like total about like ten people, and also the business owner in Temple City as well. So that's been said, there was two council members, and also their sister city programs initiators, including myself, and also their community leader, business community leaders as well. So there's total like ten people attended, and there was a delegation.
Okay, thank you, mayor, the answer. And because of your question, I, it's the next, I have another extra question. The third question is, then I hear, because I will also want to promote our city like a tourist city, we have two hotel, the future have the third hotel. We want to promote the tourist people coming to. I remember our two hotel, recently current two hotel would include our city have the, like, some tourist committee. So that's I want to asking the Mark regarding that. This committee, the purpose is same thing, is we go to the sister city to promote our city? Is it possible, can discuss with them? It's, I just still think about it, if really want to like, you see the Hualien coming, and really like when they talk to our chiefs, staff have the, some idea exchange? Is it, they are can have the some fund to support our city staff too?
You mean the TMIC? What is that called? TMID?
TMID, yeah.
Maybe Mark, you can answer this?
I would be happy to do that research, councilman Ding, to see if that's even allowed. It is kind of a semi-government organization, because we have that partnership. But I don't know that we could get that approved in research prior to the July trip that Mayor Wu is looking to take. So that might be something for the future.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's because the, otherwise, this committee, the few, what's the, their missions, their goal wanted to do that, right? I just want to find out, okay? Otherwise, it's a waste that this committee, right? So I think the, because it's from their two hotel, the most fund from them. So if they can agree, actually, when we do the promotion, it's, we will help them, okay? For myself, I just tell you, last year, I, for my alumina reunion, forty years reunion, I go to the, then they would, they say, hey, you are city council member, you are former mayor. They want that this year, end of the, this year, December, my alumina will be customary, actually. Almost thirty, the attendee will be coming to our city, use our, even I just recommendation, they are two hotel to them. They will be stay our city. We promote that, right? So, oh, that one, I don't, before I forgot, maybe asking which one they, they want to visit our city, oh, okay. Okay, so it's, it's meaning that we, we are council member, we also like want to promote our city business. Like, for me, my feeling like I'm ambassador for the, for the overall world to let the people know, United States have the city of San Gabriel. It's a historical city, and the birthplace for Los Angeles too, right? I just want to promote that too. So, yeah, and...
I'm ready to make a motion.
You are ready for the motion, okay, go ahead. I don't...
Okay, I like to make a recommendation or motion to approve entering into a sister city partnership with Ban Chao District of New Taipei, and to authorize the mayor to execute a sister city agreement on behalf of San Gabriel. And do I need to list which option, or if I'm silent, that's enough? Which is no city funding?
We just exercise, I think, the sister city first itself. And the second, there will, I will be...
Authorized to do it. But, but do we need to vote on the no city funding? Or we just be silent on it?
We just leave that out of the motion, right? The funding portion?
I'm actually, yeah, I'm asking, do I need to make a motion about the city funding? Or if I don't include anything, that it's understood that there's no city funding?
Policy says no, this policy says we can't, unless we...
Okay, so, so then I don't, I don't need, oh, so, okay. So just the one and two. Is that clear? Kind of weird.
Third one, just provide a direction, right? Just provide a direction, not the like, yeah.
His mic doesn't work.
Yeah, my mic's not working. Yeah, the policy, if you read the policy, says that we have to vote to fund city to pay for travel. If we don't vote, then the city can't pay for travel.
Yeah, okay. So actually, we don't vote for the three, just one or two, right? Yeah.
And I will second, second that, one and two, and we change the wording to sister instead of friendship. We agree?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Sister city, right?
Yes, I will second.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have a motion from Vice Mayor Mechenka, and we have a second by councilmember Chen. Please vote.
Motion passes. Vote of five zero. Approving entering into a sister city partnership with Ban Chao District of New Taipei City, Taiwan, and authorizing the mayor to execute a, would it be sister city agreement on behalf of San Gabriel?
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for Hakka Federation for your efforts. So next item, please.
I have no speaker cards for public comment.
And there's no report from our city manager. And how about our council member?
I have a report. The first one, I don't see him in the room, officer, I mean, Police Chief Elizaldi. I just wanted to give him recognition. I saw a picture of him with Catherine Barger, who used to be our former supervisor. And he was there to represent his family, and it was very touching to read about it. Oh, there he is, okay. At this event, it's the, it was the twenty-sixth annual tribute to veterans and military families. It's been, it's held in Arcadia County Park. And there was a special service award named after his father, Hector F. Elizaldi. And it was given to deputy, well, he was a deputy district attorney, Hector Elizaldi, and the Veterans Liaison for Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, and former Veterans Advisory Commissioner. I had the honor to have met him and worked with him when we were part of that, the same district. But this year, they honored Congresswoman Napolitano. As you may know, she is retiring. She's been a staunch advocate for proving the lies of returning veterans and their families. And I saw our very own police chief giving her the award along with her, with your, I believe it was your mother and your son. So I just want to recognize the good work. You come from a good stock, and, you know, I was just really proud to see you there. So I just want to give you recognition for that. It's the same Elizaldi family. Second, I did attend the pride parade from Mark Temple High School to Barnes Park. It was the fourth annual San Gabriel Valley Pride Festival. I was invited by the organizers, and I was invited to also take pictures with everyone. So I really appreciated their invitation. This parade was the largest they've had yet. And it was about inclusivity, and it was about love. And I went with two individuals who are very involved in the community, who are from the pride community. We walked down that parade route, got to hold the banner that included San Gabriel's logo, as well as Monterey Park, Alhambra, I believe it was Temple City, and Elmani. So anyway, I just wanted to let everyone know. And then, second, I also attended, along with Mayor Wu, the Buddha's birthday celebration at the Dufap Temple in San Gabriel. There, it was so well-attended, I would think at least a thousand people were there. And there were both San Gabriel residents and community members. And it was just a really beautiful event. We both got to speak. Mayor Wu, of course, spoke, what, three languages? They actually asked me to speak in Spanish, and so, and I got some applause. So apparently, someone heard me or understood me. So it just kind of emphasizes that we are a multicultural city. And then, lastly, I don't know if this is going to be appropriate, but our San Gabriel Farmer's Market, I am, you know, concerned, because there seems to be less vendors every time. And I just think we need someone from the council to kind of help shepherd this, and I know it's not on the agenda. But I, I don't know how we can work through this, because it's a little different from what we discussed earlier. But I wanted to give kudos to councilmember Eric Chan. When I was there, he was actually speaking with every vendor. He was speaking with people who were attending, trying to get feedback, trying to find ways that we can do better. Because every week, it seems to be getting, there's less and less vendors. So I don't know how we can do this, but I would really think, I really think councilmember Eric Chan should be involved in some way to help us be better, because I just haven't seen any changes the last three weeks that is, you know, we need something to invigorate it. And I guess Aldo is here, you know, maybe you want to say a few words, but I just want to, I want to see if there's somehow, councilmember Eric Chan could be involved. And that was all.
I'd be happy to. Thank you for your confidence. I'd be happy to take that initiative. And I did receive some good feedback, so I'll be reporting on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you, councilmember Chen, would you like to?
Yeah, then I'll just roll into my comments. Nice and easy. Just real quick, on May 25th, I attended San Gabriel's first Memorial Day weekend event, first in a long time. It was a lovely ceremony, and I look forward to making this an annual event in San Gabriel. On May 29th, I attended the Pasadena Federal Credit Union had a merger party. There were two different local credit unions, and they merged, and seems like a good fit. And they had a little welcome event at, kind of coming out, welcoming event at Cafe Santorini in Pasadena. I got a chance to congratulate them on behalf of the city of San Gabriel and my colleagues. On the thirty-first, May 31st, I attended the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce Networking Breakfast at the San Gabriel, our very own San Gabriel Elks Club. And there was a presentation from the San Gabriel Education Foundation. This coming Thursday, no, sorry, this coming Tuesday, about a week from today, on June 11th, at, let's see, oh, please join me at the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce Tasty Tuesday Networking Lunch. It's going to occur at Paris Baguette at Mission in Las Tunas, 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's free to attend, and you just buy whatever lunch, you pay for your own lunch. So I hope to see you there. Okay, that's all I have, so I yield. Mr. Ray?
Councilmember Chen, thank you very much. And who's next? Yes, councilmember Ding?
Okay, yeah, it's, I glad to, our city, like, on the May 25th, Saturday morning, I, with our colleague, joined our San Gabriel Memorial Day, first time in the Memorial Day ceremony. I really appreciate our city staff do the good job. And one-off suggestion, maybe we can have the more activity, and then maybe have the more people to attend it, okay? And actually, that day, I have a lot of event, but I would just point out one event. It's, it's just, just like, same day, it's got a notification at the one film called a side film. It's the person, it's dentist doctor, it's in the East Coast. He really write the novel, and right now, it become the film. It's a form, similar to me, the first generation immigration, how do the, the, it's a come to, it's a come to United States, how to, like, survive and make better life in the, in the United States. And there, I have a lot rest of the event, but it's, on the 28th, I almost attended most, it's like API, the event. When it's EDI, it's sometimes they have the kind of contribution for us, for our senior meal, okay? It's great because of the Asia heritage months. And also, on the evening, have the, with the AYC, with the browser mark, it's the API reward to the event. It's, it's appreciate the API, the AYC do the good job for, in our community. And then, okay, this one is just like entertainment, but it's a good, it's for the cheerleader from Taiwan for the baseball, okay? And then, let me see, okay. On the, on the May 30th, it's, I joined SGB CAGA meeting. It's important, it's just like, community, I think it's really like concern right now, insurance industry. Okay, I hear the some, like, current result looks like state do something, but a little bit slow. They want to do the research, and they say the research start from January, this year January, until December. Then they can promote the, called sustainable insurance. It's fancy name, okay? Yeah, so, but for the community, also remember that right now, it's hard to get, I'm involved in the insurance industry. It's, our city, it's, it's better than some, like, on the hillside, they almost, like, more percentage in non-renew. We, we have like maybe some, some residents, because the home condition is not good, it's a non-renew notice. So for, it's, the industry is really frustrating. But because of the research, end of this year, I, I don't think within another six months, they can have the new policy for the, for our community. Hopefully, we maybe have the voice, the community have voice, write the, our state, write to the, our state legislature, let them try to as soon as possible. That's really regarding our daily life. Okay, and then... Okay, yeah, I, I think it's Friday, right? Attend the, our Chamber of Commerce, the event too. Attend the, the, our Chamber of Commerce, the, the event too, yeah. And on the June, June first, Saturday, I have a chance to join the home fair hosted by the Western San Gabriel Valley Realtor. They really good event to provide a community to, especially right now, how to, the people hide a home, everything. It's, it's a really good examination, okay? So, yeah, let me see, okay, yeah, the, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ding, and I think I would, I know, I'll be there. The last part, the best part, longest one, no. Well, was first of all, thank you so much for everyone that stayed here tonight. And well, I would like to express my appreciation to our city manager, Mark Lazardo, our city staff, our, our partners, San Gabriel Veterans Memorial and also everyone who made the very first ever Memorial Day celebrations a great success. I understand that we may have that many people attended, but with two hundred flags and with, I saw the, the veterans and their families, this event really let them know that their sacrifice will ne, will be never forgotten. And next day on Memorial Monday, that I was invited by the San Gabriel Lodge to attend the luncheon and I met many veterans from our city, also our Vice Mayor Menchaka also there. So they were really delighted, but they did not know that we had a very, you know, we had the Memorial Day celebrations day before. But still, I mean, they, when they realized there was, there, there was one and there will be more events coming to, you know, salute their, you know, their bravery and defend, you know, safeguard our nations, I mean, they're still happy. So I'm, I'm very fortunate that I can talk to them and they are aware we are doing something for our veterans group. And I don't repeat anything that we have our colleagues has done. And I also participate the Asian Pacific Propagation Association event in downtown Los Angeles and I met several officers from RPD, but also the Sheriff Chief Luna and also the interim chief of LAPD. Then I, I would like to remind everyone, on June thirteen, we have a culture fest that in our his, our Mission District, that will be from five thirty PM to nine PM. And I really hope that our community can join us, this is just a new brand, we are no more like a surf up, but this is a, another great event for our community to enjoy. And a lot of things is I would like to appreciate all my colleagues today, that even I would not be able to bring our city staff with me and, but I would do my best to present our city and to meet the new friends and let them know we deserve and they deserve have a good friends like us. And I, I, I still want to invite our council member, I, I understand, self-funded, this is definitely I, I, it's my preference, it's also your preference. If you can join me, I really hope it will happen because I'm tentatively have the date from July twenty-second to July twenty-sixth. It's a very short, very, you know, it's a pressure one because we will meet a lot of people. But maybe this time I'll be there along, but I still think I will be bring your blessing. You know, thank you so much for your support, that will be making our city to escalate to another level and we will be seen by the world. Thank you very much. So now, next, thank you, and so closed section, we have none. And meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned at ten thirty-four PM.